All right.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman King. Alderman Stowe. Excellent. Alderman Fit. Alderman Maslin.
Here.
Is here. Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Genetti. Alderman Spigaro. Alderman Strom. Other woman, Stromin.
Here.
Alderman Yalman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers. Alderman Mamon. Alderman Schuer.
Yeah, Rivers is right next to him.
Alderman Blackwell.
Here.
Alderman Delago. I've got 11 present, no, 10 present and four absent.
That's what I got.
I declare quorum? All right, so we have
I'll do not have King, Fit, Blackwell.
Genetti and Blackwell, correct?
Josh, you're gonna
Okay.
King, Fit, Genetti and Blackwell.
Joe Yaman in Chicago.
Okay. All right, so we have minutes from the April 21st, 2020 virtual meeting. We have minutes from the April 28th, 2020 virtual public hearing and special meeting. And the February 11th, 2020 full board meeting to approve. Motion to approve.
Second. So moved. Stromin.
Motion by Cassetti and second by Stromin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public session. Would anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? This will be an adventure. I'll do my best, but raise your virtual hand if you have a question, if you're on the phone line. I just got a message that Bill Fitz is here. And I need to unmute him before we go on here. Anyone see him?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm here.
Yep. Got you, Bill.
Thank you.
Right.
11.
In Chicago, like, for something I cannot unmute Chicago, keep unmuting him and he it's not doing anything. Anyone from the public wish to speak tonight?
Yaman is also muted.
Okay, I'm good now.
All right, we have, we have a hand.
There you go.
Leslie. So please identify yourself, name and address for the public record, and you have up to three minutes. And I will unmute you. You are good to go.
Hi, do you guys hear me? Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So it's audio, right? Um, so, good evening, President Schuer, distinguished aldermen. My name is Leslie Navrat and I live at 98 Beaver Street. It was a little difficult figuring out how to get on, so sorry. There wasn't a clickable link, so that's why I also wanted to make sure you guys can hear me because it was acting funky, but anyway, thank you so much for the opportunity to address you this evening. As the bond decision, bond discussion begins, I'm really quickly, President Schuer, are we able to ask questions or just you guys are taking it for the record?
Uh, so tonight, you can speak during the public session. Yes, so tonight, you can speak during public session, then we're going to have a follow-up answer session for the alderman, and there's not going to be a public session after that, but the alderman can discuss that. So if you can speak now.
So I just wanted to ask that because Okay, yeah, then I'll just put then, think on the record. I'm hoping if you can help me and the Ansonia community understand the following, which are gonna, I understand is going to be on the record. Um, for the bonding application, will our city council represent Ansonia during the bond offering? Is he the person who verifies the bonding is legal, valid and binding, or is there another attorney involved? Who is that attorney and from what form? How much does the city pay for this type of attorney services? And is there legal fees in the mayor's budget that's appropriated to, to these services? Um, I'm asking this as a concerned resident and because our legal fees are steadily rising without real concrete explanation to taxpayers, and that's worrisome. So my biggest underlying question aside from these are how will these steadily rising costs, as mentioned, along with the rise of other several local services, impact our ability to pay off current and potential future debts in the long run? Especially when the COVID-19 pandemic is predicted to have substantial and long-term effects on our economy, particularly small businesses, which is one of the few revenue streams our city depends on, right? So, and the projects that are being proposed and, and in discussion aren't real economic, aren't going to generate real econo, um, revenue for us. So what is in the mayor's budget that supports the steps to ensure that we reach a net neutral, which was something that was briefly mentioned in the, by our, the financial advisor last hearing? And what are the specific steps our financial advisor recommends our city to take? And what is the timeline and indicators of that success? Making sure that, once again, we stay on that possible net neutral. I really hope that the city does its due diligence to educate the community on the above-mentioned matters as we really should, need to understand what we're getting ourselves into as taxpayers. Borrowing is never a light subject. You guys should know that. We all have credit cards and debts, right? Um, especially during, when we're trying to borrow such a large amount during economic uncertainty without the mention of a clear particular ethical plan on how the city plans to repay the money without taxpayers getting stuck with the bill. So again, thank you again for the opportunity to speak and God bless you all.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Raise your digital hand or wave or some other way of getting my attention? Anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Trying to go to different pages here, three pages of people. One hand up here. Yep. Oops. Brian? I believe I just unmuted you.
Hear me?
I just muted you. You, Brian, you were unmuted. Introduce yourself. Name and address for the public record, and you have up to three minutes to make a statement.
Brian Perkins, Six West Road. Before I begin, I just want to thank you guys for doing this, these Zoom calls. It's really nice to be able to participate in my local government as a remote citizen, so I do appreciate that a lot. Um, I guess really one of the biggest things I want to talk about tonight or just bring some light to is some of my concerns with the city's finances. Um, I was home in October of 2019. And I met with the mayor during that time. I went to go see him in his office and I asked him about the reserve fund balance. Uh, he said it was about 9% of the budget. I asked him, can you get me a figure on that? He said absolutely, can you get a figure on it? Come back to my office Monday. I said, no problem. Came back to his office Monday. He gave me a sticky note with the number 6.5 million dollars written on it. He said, this is our reserve fund balance as of October of 2019. So, okay, I didn't have a ledger, didn't have an expenditure report. There was no background documentation on this number, so validity of the number is questionable. I took the mayor's word for it, give him the benefit of the doubt, as I always do. Um, so I went ahead and took the 6.5 million dollars as canon for the reserve fund balance, the city's savings account essentially. So fast forward to last month's meeting with the comptroller, Rich Bishara. Uh, he said our city's savings account is at about, correct me if I'm wrong on this, 4.58 million dollars. Um, so I guess like one of the biggest things for me is I'm just trying to figure out where 2 million dollars went in seven months. We had, the mayor said 6.5 million in October of 2019. Rich Bishara is saying as of last month, 4.45 million. Where'd that 2 million dollars go? I'd like to see some receipts on that, see some expenditure reports, anything that we can get to the public on that. Um, that also brings up the fact of the matter is, if this budget is to pass, as the mayor has it presented now, that would bring our reserve fund balance to between 3.4 and 3.6 million dollars, which as everyone here knows, that's, that's significantly lower than what he started with, what he actually inherited from the last administration. About 9 million dollars less. Uh, that being said, we did have a bond rating downgrade in 2019. We had a downgrade up from our bond rating because of our reserve fund and because we are not um, we don't have the economic development to, according to the credit service, we don't have the economic development to justify our spending. Um, so with the, with the bond, or sorry, excuse me, with the reserve fund going below 10%, I'm just worried about the bond rating being downgraded again. Um, you know, the way we've been spending the bond, the, the way we've been spending the money, the, the reserve fund money, the way we've been using it to offset taxes uh, for so many years. In 2018, I think we used 3.5 million of it as income for the budget. Uh, we've had two tax increases so far. We've had the revaluation and then we've had a mill rate increase. I'm just trying to figure out where all this money is going, why we're still spending money from the reserve fund, why the reserve fund's so low? Um, and what the city's doing to change that path, what the city's doing to basically restore our reserve fund to what it used to be. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Josh.
Yeah, hang on a second. Yes.
Can I add a point of clarity to that? Just, when reviewing the fund balance, you have to look at the designated and the undesigned portion together. Rich gave good commentary on that during the budget introduction. I believe Brian's only looking at the undesigned portion.
Correct. I think last week he, in that thing, he said that the total was 6.4 or 5 million. Um, but the undesigned was 4 point, whatever you cited, Brian. So there was a, there, that gap of 1 point something million is the designated fund balance, but it is, is part of the fund balance.
1883, 1.883 million.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? I see one hand up. Brian, you're on. Please identify yourself, name and address for the public record, and you have up to three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Brian Sorek, 17 Elaine Drive. So when we were, when we had that meeting with Rich Bishara, I was the one who actually brought up the fund balance information question. I wrote down the notes here. He told us the fund balance was 4.58 million. Which include, which did not include the 136,321 dollars over spending from last, from this current year by the mayor and does not include a 625,000 request for next year and did not include the 137,000 dollars that was put back into the fund balance. So one other question I have is, I was looking through the previous budgets for the last five years, looking at the taxes collected, and I see we have increased our tax collection to the tune of 4,359,145 dollars, which is a difference of 12.17% over the last five years. I'm just curious where all this money's going because that's a significant amount of money and with the increases, which on 2018, 19, that was an increase of 8.68%. And last year was an increase of 3.49% in revenue. Where, where's all of our money going? That's just what I want to know, putting it out there to be on the record.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Please raise your digital hand. Turn around. We have one here coming up. Um, I will unmute. Lisa? You are, you are muted. Please identify yourself, name and address for the public record and give up to three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. It's Lisa Glazer, 56 Hoensky Way.
Hi.
Hi. I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, I keep hearing about 65 Main Street. And what is going to be in that particular building? Is the senior center going to be there or is something else? What department is, is going in there now other than the police? That, that's really all I want to know.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Raise your hand. Your friends. Last call for a public session. Would anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? Okay, with that, close the public session. And move on. Thank you all. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to shift the presentation over. At the last, at the public hearing, we had a lot of questions, both the alderman, the public in the meeting, in the chat, after the meeting. And all those questions were sent on to the city. And the city is going to give a presentation, is listed on the agenda as presentation on the bonding initiative. This is specific to the bonding questions and should address and relevant questions that were posed by everyone. And I'm going to turn it over to John Marini.
I am unmuted.
Yeah, I'm going to try. How do I, how do I change the host on this?
Just go to the more function.
Is it on the bottom?
On, if you go to the, to the profile name in your participant list.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, so I'm turning it over to you for the presentation on the bonding initiative.
And before we start, Mr. President, I just want to make sure that Barry Benarby and Brian Uden, Paul Hian and Chief Koda are all here so we could start that.
Would you like me to unmute any of them or all of them at this point?
Start with Mr. Benarby if he's here.
How do you, what's his first name?
Barry. I don't know if he's here under a number.
I don't see him alphabetically.
Paul, he may be dialing.
Do not see him here. Do you have his number?
Trying to get that.
There's a lot of numbers that are called in here, so.
Do you want to move ahead with the mayor's update? Before we start the presentation, because I want to make sure we have everyone needed to make the presentation.
Oh, who am I, my, I'm muting the mayor here? Actually, you're the host, so you tell me.
I could do that. Hold on.
He's at 110, 1110. There's a whole page of numbers, so I'm guessing that everyone that we want is here.
Says mayor.
The troll. Brian.
Okay, let me unmute the mayor. Hey, mayor?
Yeah, you there?
Did you hear us?
Could you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, President Schuer, members of the Ansonia Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. I hope that everyone is staying safe and that you and your family and friends are healthy. I will make my remarks very brief. You know, in 2016, the residents of the great city saw fit to approve funding for the new police station for our wonderful Ansonia Police Force. They knew that an old school from the 1900s in a residential neighborhood was not where their PD should be. They felt they deserved better. Now we are seeing the transformation of a fallow building in the heart of our downtown into a state-of-the-art facility. While we do not, while we did not anticipate a new home for the PD that would be located in approximately 65,000 square foot building, we understand that Ansonia is small and lacks the developable property. The original construction of the new building contemplated 22,000 square feet of space. And that is what they are going to have. But there were, are other considerations in order to make this entire building functional for future use. You will hear about some of the other costs to consider. It does not, it doesn't make good financial sense to find additional funds in the current budget and raise taxes. Absolutely not. It doesn't make good financial sense to tap into the reserve fund to pay for associated costs when we have done such a good job in decreasing our reliance on the fund balance. It doesn't make sense to demobilize Bantam, pay, pay for them and another company to return to the site at a later date to incur all these expenses. It does make good financial sense to borrow at an advantageous time when we will probably not see interest rates this low again, and the cost of borrowing will be at a net zero. It does make sound economic sense to move forward and complete the renovations at 65 Main Street. I hope this board will move forward and approve authorization to borrow the remaining funds proposed for the new police facility and our fire department and our infrastructure requests. Thank you and God bless you all.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. President Schuer, I'm going to pass the hostship back to you. And when Barry is here, we will be able to proceed with the presentation.
Okay. Just tell me when it's switched back. It should be switched now. Okay, so let's move on on the, on the agenda. Next up, we have the tax collector report and request for refunds. In your package, you receive reports for both March 2020 and April 2020. Motion to approve. By Alderman Cassetti.
Second by Mamon.
Second by Mamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Um, okay, so we'll move on. We have a, we have communication and actually in all the flurry, I failed to ask us to add late communication number one to the agenda. I'm hoping we can still do that.
I'm gonna make that motion, Josh.
Who's that?
Joe Yaman.
Yaman, second by Cassetti. All in favor to add?
Aye.
Aye.
Listen to one. Okay, thank you. Okay, so communication number one, let me just pull it out here. And I see he's here in the meeting. This is a letter from Superintendent DeBaco. And this is requesting, I don't need to read this whole thing, do I? You guys have it. I'm going to summarize it. There are, there was unexpended money in a previously approved bond from 2017 specific to the boilers, the middle school and the parking lot in Mead. And the request here is for the alderman to authorize shifting that money, which is previously approved in a, in a previous bonding. So they have the money, but shifting it into the funds so that they can complete the co-lane access road. It's co-lane in Sunset. And the letter explains that it was, this was very well received and endorsed by the police department, EMS and the fire department, creating a secondary back access road out of the, the high school off of Plaski Highway. So I don't know if there's any comments or questions on this. You have the full, Alderman Cassetti.
I think you have to unmute him.
Oh, he's muted.
He's muted.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I believe that the, that the boilers have been repaired and that anything that was of issue the, from the previous from the previous Board of Ed superintendent, that she went ahead and she made sure that Mr. DeBaco was brought up to speed and that everything that should have been taken care of with that funding was taken care of and that what we're dealing with is in excess of that amount.
Correct. This, this is, this is leftover. So specifically within the letter, there's two motions. One is motion one to transfer a 111,000 from the 2017 boiler at the, at the middle school and to transfer 21,000 from the Mead parking lot account into the amount of 132,000 to be used for, completely for the co-lane, to complete the co-lane access road project. And then secondly, motion two is to approve proceeding with the three projects as expeditiously as possible and authorize superintendent of schools to award the bids to the most fully qualified bidder with the lowest bid price and furthermore authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the contracts of these three projects.
Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve those funds and go ahead and give them the necessary means to create that emergency access to the high school.
I have, I have a discussion point on that, please.
I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion made by Spigaro, Alderman Spigaro, Alderwoman, Alderwoman Stromin, second, and now you can head, discussion.
Discussion item. So Rich, I don't know if Rich Bishara is unmuted or not, but do we have confirmation that those are the funds that are sitting in those lines remaining?
Let me unmute him.
Has that, I don't know if, if Dr. Joe confirmed that or not, but.
And I will unmute, I've unmuted Rich Bishara and Dr. DeBaco.
Yeah, the, the funds that we're talking about are residual from those two projects for the Ansonia Middle School boiler repair, which occurred about a year ago, and the Mead School parking lot, which was prior to that even, I think, when they relocated the catch basin and increased the size of the parking area up there. So those amounts are residual in those two accounts currently.
Okay, and that, this, this transfer request will zero those out?
Uh, within a thousand dollars. We rounded to leave a few dollars in there, but not, not to the penny.
Okay, all right. I'm good.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Do we do this in two separate motions? Get out in the communication as opposed to doing, grouping it into two or into one?
I would do two motions, yes.
Yeah, let's do two motions. I mean, it's
I don't know if you want to revise your, if you want to revise your motion, Tony, and just take up motion one and then we'll
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to rescind that motion. And my motion is to approve the transfer of the funds on for the access room.
As per motion one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Motion one, made by Alderman Spigaro, second by Alderman Woman Stromin. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
All right, sorry. It looks like Bill Fitz has his hand raised and he's muted. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It looks like Bill Phipps has his hand raised and he's muted. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Why can I not unmute him? This is what we were talking about before, when people mute themselves. Here we go. Oh, I think I got you.
You just muted him again. There you go.
I got it.
You must have been talking to my wife and you figured out how to mute me. I'm, I'm good with it. I'm good with the motion.
So any other discussion on this? Motion one. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right, motion one passes unanimously. Thank you. And then I'll reread motion two again. Motion two is motion to approve proceeding with the three projects as expeditiously as possible and authorize superintendent of schools to award the bids to the most fully qualified bidder with the lowest bid price and furthermore authorize the mayor to sign all documents relating to the contracts of these three projects.
I'll make that motion. Dr. Joe and with the mayor as a secondary.
All right, so motion by Mamon and second by Yaman. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? All right, thank you. So both of those motions have passed. Congrats. Make a nice road, please. All right, so then we move on to we, late communication number one. This is from Chief Cota. Is he here tonight?
Yep.
He is, okay. This was, this was the all unmuted, just in case there's a need. This is a letter from, from the chief requesting that we approve a renewal of the current five-year contract between the police department and Axon Enterprises. And this is for purchase of body cameras, tasers and other equipment. Total cost for the five-year contract is 192,977,45. You received in your packets the full quote that was sent to, I think it was Lieutenant Williams with every item on there. And it was time sensitive in that the prices may change. It was my understanding if we go beyond, the current pricing agreement ends on June 30th, 2020. So I'm assuming the price would go up after that point. Is there a motion to accept this communication?
I'll first up motion.
First by Spigaro, second by Alderman Cassetti. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
For Chief Cota. What happens to the old equipment if, if it is still viable and still usable? Do we, do we return that and we get some sort of credit back or is it just kind of a, an exchange with the, the new equipment?
So it's an exchange as far as the cameras, every two and a half years, we receive new cameras. So we'll, at the end of this contract, the current contract, we'll return those, they'll send us new ones. The tasers that we do have are at the, pretty much at the end of their lifespan. It's very difficult to get replacements. So it's part of the whole program as we did when we started this, we were able to get our tasers and body cameras and keep them all well within warranty for our five-year contract period.
Okay. Any chance we can get one of those to try it out on Josh?
Taser? Yeah. As long as you're second in line. Any other questions?
Yeah, it's just another kind of discussion. I don't know if you can speak to this, Chief Cota. I mean, I'm sure, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but is there, have there been any other departments that have gone for like a non-rental version of these? I was just kind of surprised by, it seemed like a big, a big cost for the department. And I'm sure there's a lot of technology involved and probably cloud storage and all this kind of thing. But just, are there any other alternatives that you've seen that might be available?
Well, the, the alternatives, we don't really have a lot of alternatives for us because we have five years worth of storage already in the cloud through our Axon contract. So we would lose all of those videos. So if we moved to a different company, we would have to return all of our cameras, buy all new equipment and then also keep paying for the iCloud storage so we could access our videos that exist for whatever reason, court cases, evidence and such. So the, the objective here was to continue moving forward with our, our current vendor because it makes the most sense. It was the most physically smart thing for us to do because again, we're not, we're not renting. Part of the process is they upgrade every two years. Technology changes so quickly. And that's why they give us new, new body cameras every two and a half years. As far as the tasers, those will last us, those will stay in warranty for the full five years. And at the end, depending on where we are five years from now, we would have to make a decision. But for us, it makes the most sense and it's most prudent for us to continue using the same vendor that we've had. We've had excellent success with them. We've had no breakdown issues. And our tasers are probably going on, not just outside of this contract. We had those even before. We probably had tasers for close to, I think, 10 or 11 years now. So that this was the least expensive option for us. Taser has a multitude of new products. We just wanted to stay with the system that we have. One of the quotes that we were given were in the, in the area of, close to over $200,000 per year for their new systems. That's what we're looking for. This is a cost over the five-year time period for us. So we went with the, the least expensive, but it still gave us our options to renew our equipment and keep everything under warranty.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Alderman Cassetti.
Is this already budgeted in your, in your budget?
So yes, there's already a budget of, as we currently are in the, in the contract. So the, the difference in the numbers, so if you look like year one, there's a difference of about $2,000 increase in year one. And it goes up, I, correct, and I don't have every number here. And I think it's about $48 or $4,900 for year two through five, an increase. But we are already allotted, we're already paying a yearly fee of close to, I think it's $33,400 per year right now as we speak. So it's a small increase this year and a little bit larger over the course of the five-year period.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Okay, so the motion would be to approve the request for the Ansonia Police Department to sign a five-year contract extension with Axon. Is there a motion?
There is, there is a motion already.
Point of discussion, I'm sorry. Offline with, with Cota as well. I just get these guys, they, 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 they've got you if you, if on the data, on the data side of things, right? So what can we do to protect ourselves? So in five years, if we want to go out, back out to bid and, and make it competitive to the entire sort of group of vendors for something like this so that they can make it compatible that the data, whatever cloud data storage that we have with them would be compatible with other systems. So something to think about. I can talk, we can talk offline separately on that. But you know, it's tricky because they, you know, they'll come back and they'll, they'll ask you for more every time. And we don't have much choice than if, if, if we rely on them for the data.
Understood. There are, we would have to pay separate funding to have that downloaded from the cloud. We'd have to buy a server with a backup and then that would still stand alone from anything. If we moved to another company five years from now, we would still be required to use whatever their storage is, whatever that may be, if we were looking at different companies. We were most comfortable just for your own measure. And they do somewhat when you sign a contract, you, you do get and for lack of a better term, stuck with them, but we're happy with the products they've given us. These body cameras have not failed us. Our tasers have not, have not failed us, have not broken down. So we're very content and happy with the product that we're using now. And that's why we're asking to, to renew. But I understand your concern that you, you could get held hostage for a, a long period of time if, if you didn't have alternatives down the road.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief, Chief, what's the retention period for the data? Do you know?
It varies because we have unlimited cloud storage. We pretty much keep just about everything except for minor calls that, that go out about every two years. There's, there's a multitude based on state regulations and destruction orders. So we've elected at this point to keep almost all of our video except for your basic. I found an open door, you know, a minor complaints, anything that has an arrest or summons or ticket, we keep those in its entirety for a lifetime.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there, is there any other questions for the chief or any other discussion on this? Okay, Trish, you're going to have to remind me who made the, the motion.
Alderman Spigaro made the motion. Alderman Cassetti seconded it.
Okay. So let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item is, we have one resolution for consideration and discussion. So this is, and I'm going to read this because for me to summarize, it's going to take me just as long to, to just read the page. Resolution regarding a non-lapsing education fund, whereas the Connecticut General Statute 10248A provides unexpended education funds account for this fiscal year ending June 30th and each fiscal year thereafter, notwithstanding any provision of the general statutes of any special act, municipal charter, home rule, ordinance of any other ordinance, the Board of Finance in each town having a Board of Finance, Board of Selectment in each town having no Board of Finance or the authority making appropriations for the school district. Where each town may deposit into a non-lapsing account any unexpended funds from the prior fiscal year from the budgeted appropriation for education for the town, provided such amount does not exceed 1% of the total budgeted appropriations for education for such, such prior fiscal year. And whereas the Board of Aldermen of the City of Ansonia is willing to agree that it will deposit funds unexpended from the Board of Education appropriation that would otherwise revert to the city's reserve fund at the end of the fiscal year, up to the statutory maximum of 1% of the total budgeted appropriation for education for that prior fiscal year into a non-lapsing account that will be available to the Board of Education upon request expenditure in subsequent fiscal years. Now therefore be resolved, the Ansonia Board of Aldermen as follows. One, pursuant to its authority under the Connecticut General Statutes 10248A, Board of Aldermen hereby establishes a non-lapsing account. It hereby names the Board of Education non-lapsing account which shall be maintained and audited as other city accounts. Two, if funds appropriated to the Board of Education pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 10222 remain unexpended at the end of a fiscal year, such funds up to a maximum of 1% of the total budgeted appropriation for education of said prior fiscal year may be deposited into the Board of Education non-lapsing account at the discretion of the Board of Aldermen. And three, upon the written request of the Board of Education, funds in such Board of Education non-lapsing account as the Board of Education may identify shall be released in accordance with Charter and Statute to the Board of Education for expenditure in its discretion. And then it would just be signed. So I don't know how you guys want to handle it. That's the, the reading of the resolution. Dr. DeBaco is here. We could ask him questions. If you guys have any discussion or want to make a motion or anything else?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Just a, a couple of questions that occurred to me upon reading it. And I've since had some, I, I was able to have a conversation with the superintendent about this and he was able to send me a little bit additional information. But the two questions that I had is one, is there a restriction on the monies and what it can be spent on? And my understanding from talking to him that it would be restricted monies. I, in terms of capital costs and expenditures and things like that. Additionally, what I would, my question was, was there a cap? I see there's a cap on the amount of money that can be deposited annually, but whether or not there was a cap on the amount of money that could be kept in the fund that could be used as well. I was, he did send me information. There was a bill filed that was JF'd out of the Education Committee. I don't see it in a public act, however. So I don't know if it passed, which actually increased the amount of money that could be deposited from 1% to 2%. So, um, I mean, I'll just say this is that this has been something that has been brought up in the past. I think this is probably a good idea. I think that we would probably be best served by taking the time to do this right and doing this the right way, dotting the i's and crossing the t's with regards to getting clarification. I see the two statutes, 248 and 248A, that set it out pretty clearly. But what I would like to know is neither one of those statutes specifically puts a cap on the amount in a fund. So I don't know if that's something that we need to do. I think it would probably be prudent for us to discuss that either as a board or setting up a subcommittee to work with the Board of Alder, or the Board of Education and the superintendent to sort of hash out the details on something that I think that we're all can feel comfortable with before voting on this. So that's, that was just what I wanted to say with regards to a couple of the questions that popped into my mind when I read the resolution and just some commentary there.
Are you making a motion to, to?
Well, I would like to give, I would like to give the superintendent an opportunity to kind of discuss what the meaning was behind it. And kind of, I think that we're working towards something together here. And just kind of addressing, you know, he would have the ability then to have some money to do the capital improvements that I know he needs to do on his end. So I, I don't know if you want to let the superintendent say a few words and then we can, you know, get into more discussion if we need to.
Yes, Dr. DeBaco, you are unmuted and you can speak.
All right, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, President Schuer. So the non-lapsing account came through a conversation, talking to Chris Phipps, Rich Bishara, and also talking to John Marini. This would be a great mechanism for us to offset budgetary shortfalls, especially moving forward to next year. I believe, and John could probably help out with this. It's using 1% that could be put into the count, into a non-lapsing account, not to exceed 2%. And this should be spent on one-time, non-recurring purchases, usually capital projects. So what I could essentially do is put some money away and zero out my capital line moving into next year and be able to make our funds work and keep everyone employed next year. It's, it's a mechanism that could be very helpful. It's also a mechanism that with good financial planning and being fiscally prudent, I won't have to ask the aldermen or taxpayers if I know that if I have a boiler project in the next three years, it's going to cost me $300,000. If I could put $100,000 away and be financially prudent for three years, you know, leading up to that project, I don't have to ask taxpayers or the alderman for, for additional funds. And I could use the non-lapsing account based on, you know, once again, this account will also be held on the city's side. The city will know what money's in it. It gets audited just like another city account. In actuality, for us to access it, we just, we would have to ask, ask the city to access that account. So it's not something that, it'll be out there, it could be helpful. I also think it's another mechanism, the non-lapsing account. Instead of, you know, the alderman appropriating another couple hundred thousand dollars into our budget for a one-time purchase, this would eliminate that one-time purchase need because once that, whatever purchase, say if it's rooftop air conditioning units and you give me $200,000 into, it changes our MBR by 200,000, but it changes your MBR forever. But with a mechanism like this, you could fund just education and those other large, some of those projects could be funded by being financially prudent. And I mean, I mean, John could also help out with the statutory, statutory information. But I mean, Rich Bishara was unbelievably helpful and, and trying to set this up to make sure that our, our budget works for next year. So that's pretty much the background, a little synopsis of the account.
Thank you. And I, I unmuted both Rich Bishara and John Marini, if, if either of you want to.
Mr. President, if I can say, this was certainly a collaborative effort between the Board of Education, staff and commission reaching out to the city. We see this is a great way to make the most of taxpayer funds. The account encourages savings on the part of the Board of Ed. It allows us to allocate additional funds into the next budget year without the worry of the MBR. And it increases transparency between both sides. As Alderman Yaman pointed out and hinted towards, different communities have tailored this account to the needs of their Board of Education. And that's certainly something we can do here. Directing those funds to be spent on capital expenses, one-time capital projects at the Board of Ed. That's something that cities and towns are doing. Essentially, they're tailoring that statutory language to work towards the priorities of their particular Board of Eds and communities. So I'd certainly welcome that conversation to sit down with the Board of Ed and perhaps tweak the resolution to make it more custom-made. and perhaps tweak the resolution to make it more custom-made. But it's certainly something the mayor's office is very, very supportive of. We feel it's a great creative way to work with the Board of Ed and the Board of Ed budget. We all obviously realize we're in a world of limited resources, financial constraints. This is a way really to work together to overcome those challenges.
John, I have, I have a question. So we mentioned around the treatment with the MBR and things like that. Is the city allowed to fund, you know, one-time smaller purchases? Let's just say, you know, I think 100,000. Dr. Tabacco mentioned around air conditioning units and things like that. Are we able to one-time fund this non-lapsing account without impacting the MBR year over year?
So the city has made, made allocations towards Board of Ed expenses that don't go into the MBR. Bonding is a perfect example of this. The city has used its bonding power in the past to pay for, say, the improvement of school facilities and say the changing of, right, improvement, replacement of a roof. So there are expenses outside of the Board of Ed budget where the Board of Ed certainly benefits, but it doesn't increase the MBR. But this statute is interesting because it allows the Board of Ed to take the unspent surplus of its budget in one year and actually roll a portion over into the next year, up to 1%. And is also, as Alderman Yaman mentioned, it seems that there was some legislation put out there to increase that cap to 2%, although I'm also not clear if that was actually enacted or if that was just kind of left on the table. But in other words, this is really the only device to take a surplus in one year and roll it over into the next year, which, as I was saying, could encourage savings because now the Board of Ed realizes, okay, if it could generate savings, that money now doesn't drop to the city's bottom line, doesn't drop into the fund balance. They could potentially hold on to it and have more money next year. And as the city, we don't have to be worried about that amount constituting an extra addition to the MBR, the minimum budget requirement. They could simply use it through this non-lapsing account. And we could certainly direct those funds to be spent through resolution on capital expenses. And some communities, they've done different things with it. And as we continue the exploration of this, I could certainly show you the different ways other communities have enacted this account.
Okay.
But we certainly have a superintendent at the Board of Ed that's being very, very proactive with how to best use the funds that he's given on behalf of the students and the teachers. And so it really makes sense for us to collaborate in a way that allows the city to do this in a way that's responsible to the taxpayers and in a way that gives them a little more flexibility on the Board of Ed side and not have to worry about blowing through every last dollar, knowing that they're, they would be able to use those funds in the next year. That's what the statute, that's what this particular statute gives us, this ability to do that.
And also if I can chime in?
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
The way this would probably end up working, it's, you won't know what their residual is at the, on June 30th. It won't happen until we're fully through the audit. So that's why it talks about approving it in the following fiscal year for the prior fiscal year. And it gives the Board of Aldermen the option. They don't have to do it if there's extra. It will be at a vote of the Board of Aldermen if they so choose to add it to the fund. And that fund will sit on the side of the city in what would be similar to our designated fund balance reserve account, similar to what those are. And for the expenditure, it would require that the Board of Ed come to the Board of Aldermen and the city to seek approval to spend those funds on a project. And they'll, at that time, you'll also have control over yea or nay on that also. So in the past, I've been dead set against this. I'm now, with all of the, the information that's been flowing between the two sides, I understand, I'm not sure there'll be a reserve surplus this year, but there may be. And if there is, I think it would behoove us to be able to allow us to carry that over for capital purposes into next year, given all the things. I mean, the thing that comes to my mind is there's a requirement, could be a very large requirement to purchase a lot of new Chromebooks for distance learning as that may well be part of next year's educational process, whether in part-time or full-time. But computers will be one big area where then they might be able to utilize that. And that was kind of the impetus to push us to try and get this done prior to the fiscal year ending. And I don't know, John, if we enacted this next year, would it allow us to be retro with it or not?
I don't believe so.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, I wanted to add that.
Thank you. Alderman Cassetti, I see you had your analog hand up. Could you ask a question? No? Okay.
He's muted.
Oh, he's muted.
Yes, thank you. I just want to be sure that I understand that the 2% is the maximum that, and it can't be exceeded. Is that correct? No matter if it goes into two, three, four years without use?
That's not actually what the statute says on its face. It's something we would look into. Right now, the statute that we see allows up to 1% of an annual budget deposited, rolled over rather, from one year to the next. We can look into whether there's an overall cap, but even if there isn't, I believe other communities have created one.
Okay.
So that the account itself has a cap. But the statute on its face deals with what you can roll from one year to the next, and it seems to be 1%. Now, there is some draft language out there that suggests it can go up to 2%. And we need to make sure that this is in fact the actual approved version of this amendment. But it is not listed on many statutory guides that are out there right now.
Thank you.
To me, it sounds like everyone seems to be pretty on board with it, but the desire to personalize it and maybe put some of that language in there is probably a good idea for everyone's sake. Is that pretty much what we agree, or?
I like it the way it is.
Well, my only, if I may, if I may, Mr. President, as, like I expressed earlier, I think my only concern would be is that I'm not sure which, I see draft language for a statute that was a bill that was introduced. I don't know if that actually passed because I can't find the specific public act. So I don't know if we're capped at 1% annually, 2% annually. And I don't see any language restricting it for capital at all. And in either one of the stat, either the, the proposed bill that it looks like was, came out of committee, I don't, or the actual two statutes either. So I'd just like to, I mean, before I go voting on this, I would like a little bit of clarification and maybe, like John indicated, maybe fine tuning it for Ansonia. And I think the best way to do that is possibly to have a conversation with Joe and members of the Board, you know, and Chris, and Chris at the Board of Ed and say, hey, what do we want to design this to do? And how much, you know, what kind of flexibility you guys need? Because I don't want to restrict funds for capital costs if they're like, as Rich indicated, they need technology and they're going to have to spend money there as well. So maybe, you know, I would be suggesting, you know, tabling this for a meeting, hopefully retaking this up in June at the June meeting, having some discussions between now and then and trying to find to some of the language.
If we were to do that, that would not impact the ability to pass this for this year, correct? We'd still be in under the, under the wire?
Right.
Yeah.
I think so. All right.
Just one other point of discussion, if I may, President. You know, just kind of reminds me of like the transportation lockbox at the state level. And I think, you know, at face value, I like the savings incentives that this creates. But as we sort of fine tune the language, you know, I think it would be good, you know, you know, for, for this to be sort of have some controls that this, this does remain as a sort of, as funds specifically earmarked or sort of safeguarded for, for the education purposes so that it doesn't erode that incentive if, you know, three years of accumulation occurs and then, you know, the city is in a situation where they, they feel, you know, they need to utilize those funds for something else outside of education.
Yeah, the statute's pretty clear about that. Alderman Roseland is that it seems that once it, once it is approved by the Board of Aldermen and set into that account, it cannot be taken back. That's, that's the language, that's how I read it anyway. But it's just a matter of getting to that point and then what it's used to can be once it's in that account. And I think that's kind of where we need more of the clarification.
Yeah, there's no concern over it being for Board of Ed use. It's dedicated for Board of Ed use. However, I have seen other communities restricted to capital, to technology, and also some classroom uses. So it's interesting because the statute, neither draft of the statute speaks to that at all. And so I do believe there is a customization that the city isn't able to engage in. We do need to understand what the authority comes from, where the authority comes from to do that. And we could certainly tailor this and meet our deadline by the end of the year. And again, we're very happy to be collaborating with the Board of Ed on this. I think it's a creative idea that creates a lot of positive incentives to get taxpayer money to where it needs to go.
Right.
I would agree. I think Alderman Yaman also mentioned around a, an overall cap. So obviously the 1%, you know, per year, but is there an overall cap once it hits a certain threshold? Does it, does it max out or is it just unlimited, potentially 1% every year?
Yeah, that's what I was, um, I'm concerned about. The exact statute and say of every year they have 1% every year that they have going into that account. Is there a limit on that account?
2%.
I think you could make the cap. I'm sorry to interject, but I think that's something you could customize. A lot of, a lot of districts, and I believe many, have a cap at 2%. But that's something that I leave up to the Aldermen and to the attorneys that read statutes. But I think you could say 1% a year and not to exceed 2% of the budget. But that's totally up to the will of the Aldermen.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think something that conservative, you know, Dr. Joe doesn't really get you much other than, you know, potentially two years of rolling 1% if you will. And something capital, if you have a bigger cost, obviously you're going to need it. Again, I'm not, I'm not for cap, I'm not against it. I'm just curious, does that language need to be in there to say, hey, it's, it potentially can be 1% in perpetuity for however long and, you know, and then we just kind of work with it from there?
Yeah. I'm used to, 2% of our budget right now is 600,000. I don't, I don't see us, anything larger than 600,000. I think we would probably go up to bond for it. So I think 2% would not be an unrealistic number to stay under if, that's just me to you, to the Aldermen.
Yeah. But even in that 2%, you're, you're a year and a half and you have, you know, potentially the, close to a million dollars for, you know, a capital project. If it's, you know, that's obviously really, really aggressive on your, on your lack of spending, of course. But, yeah, I'm not opposed to it. I was just kind of curious if, what other towns are doing? If there's any other sort of benchmark around, do they cap it at 10 million, something along those lines? And just say, hey, it's 1% a year kind of deal?
I could find out more information as well.
Okay.
Okay. I like, I like the idea of wordsmithing it a little bit. I don't know if someone wants to make a motion to tweak this?
I'll make that motion to table it. I'll make the motion to table pending discussions with Superintendent Tabacco as well as the Board of Education and collaborating on, on language that we want to see in a final draft.
A seconded.
Maybe, maybe we have the, seconded by Rivers. Any other discussion? All right, so we'll, oh, we'll vote? All in favor of tabling?
Joe Cassetti has a question.
Oh, Joe Cassetti, analog hand again. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry. But I'm, I believe the words transparency between the city and the Board of Ed. We've reached new milestones with them and they still have to come to us for approval if they're going to use that fund. I think by us keeping an eye on it anyways, it's not going to make much difference if we table it now or not.
I don't think it was tabling because we didn't want to do it. I think it was tabling it just to clean up the language and have it exactly as everyone, everyone feels comfortable. And then I would foresee that we would approve it next month.
Okay.
Agreed.
And I would suggest further that we have an old, an education subcommittee of the Aldermen that those, that we employ them to, you know, to talk with the, with the school system and the Board of Ed and the superintendent in the city. All right, so we're good on that. Thank you, guys. Moving on, we have no ordinance. Is there any new business? Not that I'm aware of. Any old business? All right, we have, actually I skipped that. We have one appointment. Sorry, one appointment. Letter from the mayor, May 8th. A recommendation from the mayor to the Board of Aldermen to appoint to the Ansonia Housing Authority a five-year term. Lori Vaccaro, Republican, 515 Beaver Street. To finish a term actually that expires 12/20, or 12/12/20. So.
I make a motion.
Motion by.
Second, Spigaro.
Second by Alderman Spigaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. Appointment passes. Thank you, guys. Like I said, there's no ordinance, there's no new business, there's no old business. So we'll, all we have left is the executive session, but we'll bounce back to the presentation on the bonding initiative. So I'm going to turn the host ship back over to.
I think Charlie's trying to say something.
You're not, you're not muted, so go ahead. Charlie?
I think he's frozen.
Charlie?
While we're waiting for Charlie, I just have a question. Are we going to hear from the, you know, separately from the bonding presentation from economic development? I just saw something come out, you know, that there's a talk that potentially Shiva O'Malley's going to be working in Seymour. And so I'm just curious to hear, you know, from her, what the thoughts are on that? If that's new business or if that's going to, that can come in a separate discussion if, if possible. Appreciate that.
Well, it's not on the agenda, but I believe she's in the presentation. But let's move back to. Who's, is Charlie's muted? Hang on.
Yeah.
But I'm not the host anymore, so I cannot, Charlie needs to be, Charlie needs to. So Charlie must, okay, he's unmuted now. Still, can you hear us?
Must be on his end.
Does he have his audio turned down?
Get our attention.
You want me to call, call him? Hold on.
I didn't see his hand up. His hand was up?
Okay, hang on. Hang on.
He's waving physically.
Correct.
Yeah, can you guys hear him? Can you hear Charlie? Go ahead, Charlie.
I have one question. I'm sorry I interrupted. Chief Cota, is he still there?
Is Chief Cota still there?
Yes.
Can you please just give some kind of a report on what's been going on up on Hill Cop? And that, you know, complaints, there are cars being stopped.
Charlie wants an update on the, he says there's a lot of cars being broken into recently. And could you give an update, I believe is what the translation was?
Yes. Yes.
Chief? He's muted. Can I?
You have to unmute him.
He's muted.
Hang on, Charlie. They're unmuting the chief.
Oh.
Uh, you could, you could, Deirdre.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'm here now.
He's unmuted.
Chief? Okay, Charlie, I heard your question. Yeah, so we're, we're very well aware. There's been a rash of cars being entered throughout most of the town. There's been last couple of days or last week or so, it's been predominantly the Hilltop. But we are very well aware, our midnight crew is aware. It seems to be overnight. There's a group going around the Ansonia Derby, Shelton Seymour, Woodbridge, Orange, Milford, entering cars. All of the vehicles that we're dealing with are unlocked and there's valuables. Or if, if there's, they're looking for valuables in the car, I should say. So anything that's of any value, any computers, wallets, they're taking it. But we put out some posts asking people, one, first off, make sure your cars are locked and secured as best as possible. But we're very well aware, our detectives have been working with other departments. We've possibly identified some vehicles and some people, so we continue to work on that. But we, we definitely know there's a lot going on. I was speaking with Lieutenant Lynch about it actually today, trying to see if there's a particular time, location. It's definitely overnight is when we're dealing with it. So we're very well aware, our midnights, evenings, days, every shift. A lot of times we're taking the complaints in the early morning hours and people are leaving to go do their daily business. So we continue to work on it in hopes that we can get some arrests out of it. I know Milford arrested, I believe, seven individuals on Saturday night into Sunday morning. So there's a large group of people, individuals roaming about the, pretty much the entire valley, entering cars and taking things out of there. To include stealing cars if you happen to leave your keys in the, in the vehicles. So one, we're asking people to not do that. And two, we're trying to make everybody rest assured. We know what's going on. We're doing our best to stem that and work with other towns to resolve it.
Hey, Chief, can I just add a note to you, just to circle back? I know there was a post about some phone scam that's going around. I don't know if you could just remind the, that this is here, just what the scam is and, you know, precautions to take.
Yeah, so, so right now the most recent, of course, there's many scams. If you don't, first off, I'll start out, if you don't know who the person is and they're calling you and they have no reason to call you, do not call them back. Do not respond to them. Don't give them any of your personal information. Worst case, if somebody says they're from one of your utilities, don't call that number. Call the main number that you find on a website and ask to speak to someone and they'll confirm whether or not they called. The one that we're seeing most recently that we posted on, and actually we've got a couple of tip 411s about it, is automated voicemail that's coming out from Apple. And they're saying that your computers have been compromised. You need to call this number. They're going to fix it for you. Apple's not going to call you. They don't know what computer you have. They don't know what you're dealing with. So they're not, they're not going to do that. The, the second thing to worry about is the big key is if they asked you, they want to fix something and they want to get remote access to your computers or your phone or any digital device, do not do that. Do not allow anybody you don't know access to your devices. The next piece that's most important is if they somehow get access or they start to make their way through a conversation with you, they're going to ask you to go and get gift cards from Target or Walmart, usually in the form of iTunes, sometimes in others. And what they do is they make you go out and they get hundreds and thousands of dollars worth of gift cards and they ask you to read off those numbers. And once you do that, they bank that information and they spend it and you're out of luck. So we're, we're asking anybody and everybody, do not respond to any calls, especially automated ones. You can usually reach any of your account holders, any of your utilities directly through their lines. They're not going to call out of the blue and say, hey, by the way, you've got a problem with your computer or your TV and such. So don't, do not respond to those. And whatever you do, do not let anybody get remote access. And, and most importantly, do not go to the store and buy iTunes card, any of those gift cards to redeem those back to those people. If somebody was doing that, if it was legitimate, Apple would take your credit card because they do it now. Because you can buy stuff directly from them with your credit card. So that's what we're trying to warn people of. Just don't pick up. Don't pick up those calls. Almost all of those automated calls are some sort of fraud.
Yeah, they, they even say that they're from social security here. It's another scam that I've heard.
Absolutely. Social Security, Social Security will tell you, they'll never call you and ask you for your information. They'll notify you by US Mail and then you can contact a particular person. So yeah, any of that stuff, if you're receiving an unsolicited phone call, stay away from it. Don't even answer it. Let your answering machine pick it up hopefully, or ignore it completely.
Thanks, Chief.
You got it. All right. All right, so are we ready for the presentation on the bonding?
Okay, we are. So I'm going to unmute Barry. Barry, can you hear me? Hey, Barry? Great. Okay, great. I got you on the line. I'm going to start. I'm going to start a screen share to get the presentation up. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so in response to the public hearing in our last Board of Aldermen meeting, we have put together a presentation tailored towards talking to those questions and hopefully providing some additional information as to not only the reasons why a bonding initiative has been recommended by the mayor's office, but also discussing the conditions surrounding this bonding initiative and also the financial condition of the city and its ability to do this in this particular time. So essentially this is volume two of our discussion on the bonding initiative. And again, we're looking at questions more than anything. And taking a look at the questions, which were all documented in our last, in our last meeting minutes from the public hearing in the Board of Aldermen. The time for borrowing is a big question that comes up in many different forms. And generally it comes up under the form of, is it the right time to borrow in general? During COVID-19, during the situation that's ongoing? And more specifically, is the right time for Ansonia as a city to borrow, given its financial condition? And I have on with me Barry Bernaby, who's the Ansonia's financial advisor and has been for the last eight years at least. Barry, can you hear me? Hey, Barry?
Yeah, I can hear you, John. Can you hear me? Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
So Barry, you've been with the Ansonia for some time, right?
Yes, I think it's been over 10 years now.
Hey, Barry? And so any bonding is done in consultation with Barry. Very closely to make sure that we're putting the city in an advantageous position. And specifically here, that's significant because as you know, the borrowing totals, $5 million. We've already gone over this many times. The 3.1 million is the largest piece of this for the 65 Main Street project. 1.5 million for road improvements and infrastructure, 300,000 for fire vehicles and 100,000 for a field study. So the first question Barry that really has come up is the very general idea of borrowing versus simply paying for something within the budget for next year or possibly even going to the reserve fund. And obviously we feel very strongly that there's an advantage of leveraging debt versus taking an action that would raise taxes or further reduce the fund balance. But Barry, can you talk to that a little bit? Just that very generally why a city would want to borrow and how that has advantages over budgeting?
Sure, absolutely. So John, you can hear me, right? It's Barry?
Yep.
I can, we can hear you, Barry.
Okay, good. John, you're absolutely right. I mean, for, for large capital projects for a million dollars and over, it makes much more sense to, to issue bonds for them to leverage debt service and pay for those capital projects that have a long lifespan. Say roads, schools, buildings, stuff like that should be paid amortized over the life of the project as opposed to taking the money out of reserves. So, so bonding rates are very low now. It makes much more sense to issue debt for these capital projects than to take it out of the, pay it directly out of the budget.
And the tax impact is really the big thing from the mayor's office perspective that we're looking at when, when considering larger projects. If it's going to raise taxes and create instability for individuals and business owners, that's something we want to avoid. So if at all possible, we'd like to leverage borrowing, to leverage debt in order to get these projects done without raising taxes. So the other question that comes up is, well, is this a safe time to borrow during COVID-19? Is, and is Ansonia in a good position to borrow? So we asked Barry to crunch the numbers to determine, well, what does the market look like? And more specifically, what, what position is the Ansonia in? So I'll let Barry talk a little bit to the debt position that the city is currently in right now.
Right, so, um, oh, I see. You've got the spreadsheet up there, so that is a bit busy. But what that spreadsheet attempts to illustrate is on the left-hand side, columns A, B, C, D, and E show the city of Ansonia's existing debt profile. Column B is the principal payments on a fiscal year. Column C is the interest payments. Column D is the existing principal and interest payments. And column E is an important column to me. If you look at column E, you'll see it's all in red, meaning if the city were to never borrow again, debt service would drop off each year. That's a big positive. That, that shows that historically, Ansonia does not push off debt service payments. You know, they issue bonds, they start paying for them right away. Now that decrease in debt service is going to help, could help mitigate any future debt service. And as we go from left to right, we go to column F and we see a proposed, what we call ban issue, bond anticipation note for $8 million. That $8 million has already been authorized by the city, just hasn't been issued yet for the, for the police headquarters. And we're hoping to tomorrow, Wednesday, to, to borrow that $8 million. We're hoping to get a very low interest rate, probably close to one and a half, below one and a half percent. And when that comes due next year, next February, we're looking to do a permanent financing of that $8 million. And you see in column G, the principal payments. Column H, you see the proposed interest payments, principal and interest. And then assuming the city authorizes these new capital projects for $5 million that we're talking about. This debt analysis shows another proposed bond issue in fiscal '22, in February of '22, for that $5 million. And you see the principal and interest for, for that bond issue. So again, as we go from left to right, we come to column K, which is the total proposed debt service for those two new bond issues. Then column L takes the existing debt and adds the proposed debt and you get the, the new combined projected debt service. And the last column, column M, shows the, the delta or the increase in de, or decrease in debt service from one year to the next. And so you could see instead of it being all red, you see two years there where it's in blue, meaning debt service would increase for two years under this scenario. So the, the city could issue $13 million of bonds, 8 million already authorized, an additional 5 million. And it'd only be two years of increase in debt service payments. And you can see them there in column M, about 372,000 in fiscal '23 and then about 244,000 in fiscal '24. And then every year after that, the debt service would drop off.
So Barry, I also have the chart that you've provided us with, which explains it in a different way.
Exactly. This chart represents that same spreadsheet in a visual form. Those blue bars are the city's existing bonded debt service now. And you see them per fiscal year and they decrease each year. Those red bricks lopped on top of the blue bars are the proposed new debt service for the 8 million and the 5 million combined together. So you see there would be two years of increase in debt service, peaking in 2024, fiscal year '24, and then decreasing each year after that. So again, the, that decrease in existing debt, the blue bars, really helps to soften the impact of any new debt. And another benefit to all this that we don't even really talk about is when municipalities issue bonds, it's just the nature of the municipal bond market, you typically get what's called a bond premium of several hundred thousand dollars, anywhere between 2 to $300,000. And that money should be used to help mitigate that service too. So in those two years where debt service goes up, you will, the city will receive bond premiums that could completely or very close to mitigate those increases. So it, it would soften the budgetary impact of that. And, and, and you know, without going on too long, this, this is, is the rating agencies like to see communities that have high bond ratings like Ansonia does to, to continue to invest in the community, in capital needs, improve the quality of life for the community to, and to try and structure that in so that debt doesn't spike up too high in any one year. That you try and keep that relatively stable and improve the, the capital needs of the community and keep the quality of life high. And that's what we attempt to do here with this, with this graph, attempts to illustrate that.
Thanks, Barry. So essentially we're looking at a relatively low debt profile that the city does have. We have retiring debt on the horizon, so the amortization of, of debt is a possibility here. We have a strong credit rating. And as we're going to talk about, and which very interesting, is we have favorable market conditions for borrowing. And of course, this was a question that we certainly took to heart. Anyone that was expressing concern over whether this was simply the wrong time to borrow, given what's going on out there. But as we take a look at the rates that we would encounter currently versus what they have been historically in the past, we're looking at an advantageous time to borrow on behalf of the city to push projects forward. And Barry, again, you supplied us with this chart. I'll let you explain what we're looking at here.
Right, it's, it's a little bit busy, but, but basically what it shows, John, is the, the yield or the borrowing cost for a 10-year AAA rated municipal borrowing. And you can see as, as that red line goes across from left to right, starts in 2015 and it really bottoms out towards the right-hand side there. And then you see it spike up like a heart attack. That's what happened in, in March into April. Municipal borrowing costs shot up there on the far right-hand side, very, very high. But they immediately or very quickly came back down. And, and long story short with this chart is that we are very, very close to those all-time lows we were at prior to this pandemic starting. That's what this chart is attempting to illustrate.
So in terms of a bottom line, again, we're talking, actually, let me back up a little bit. We talked about how we're taking new debt and it's replacing retiring debt. And because that profile is dropping, there's an ability, of course, to keep the, to kind of hold the line in terms of what taxpayers are paying. But you also mentioned premiums being able to mitigate that a little more. Could you explain that a little more for an audience that may not be used to that terminology?
That's a good point, John. It is kind of quirky. It's just a nature of, of the municipal bond market that the, the, when we have these competitive bids for these bond firms to submit the lowest rate to the city, they, they typically submit a bid that says, here's the $5 million that you're borrowing or whatever the amount is. But they give you actually a little bit extra because some of the interest rates that they charge you are slightly above market rates. Because a lot of the investors out there, rates are so low right now in the municipal market. They're historically low levels. But these investors that buy these bonds, they really are motivated. they really are motivated by that tax-exempt interest that they get from all municipalities. That interest they get is exempt from federal and state taxes. So these investors, after tax return, is much higher than what the city actually pays. So they're so motivated to get that tax-exempt interest that they actually charge the city slightly higher than market rate. And they give you this big premium upfront to mitigate that slightly above market rate. So these bond premiums that we get, most municipalities should use them to mitigate the debt service in the first year, or two, or three. And that's the nature of those premiums.
So again, you know, in responding to concerns, the city would not be recommending this initiative if we didn't think we can hold the line. And when I say that hold the line, I mean basically that bottom line, you know, hold the line on taxes. So while certainly we are borrowing more money, that's a given, it's being done in a way and under conditions where the taxpayers are not going to see that reflected as an increase in what they're paying in taxes year to year. And again, that's because of a combination of circumstances. The city's bond rating, the debt profile, which is not only low but decreasing, the ability, as Barry has explained, to get premiums, to be able to offset any potential increase, and the market, the market conditions being what they are, being able to get a competitive rate lower than average and be able to use that to move forward again with our projects and our investment in the community. And so while a lot of the questions kind of center around, you know, is this the right time to act? We would answer yes, that there's an advantage to acting in this time. And I'll also say, you know, the point was brought up, almost an additional question early at this meeting, you know, that these are not, I guess the point was being made that these are not economic development projects. And the mayor's office, and I would certainly disagree. I think we've seen historically in this country that during times where the economy has retracted, especially during times of recession, and certainly during the Great Depression, you know, and I throw that in because, again, you're seeing a time of economic contraction that's unprecedented. We've seen success through this country acting through investing in itself, whether it be in infrastructure, whether it be in the community. And we've seen an economic stimulus result from that rather directly. So when it comes to providing for our Main Street, for our local economy, we see this investment in the heart of our downtown Ansonia more critical than ever. And the same, of course, goes for any investment we were to make in our volunteer firefighters or other fields and road improvements. But certainly, we don't think that now is the time to hold back making a significant investment that would bring people into the downtown area. We believe that it would create a ripple effect and that given these uncertain times, that that's needed now more than ever. And so we would answer that question very strongly, that now is the right time to act. The circumstances are in our favor, and there's a true benefit to achieve by acting now. Now, another group of questions centered on the past. So looking back at our track record of bonding. Because of course, as Barry has showed you in the chart, the city has borrowed before. And in the past, we've made the same argument, you know, that we're borrowing at a time where, you know, strategically, it makes sense and investing in the community in a way that's going to produce a positive impact. But some of the questions asked for more information, what were those projects? What was the money spent on? If anything is left? And I think talking to those points are helpful to understanding the context. And I have Sheila O'Malley, our Economic Development Director. Sheila, can you hear?
Yep, I can. Thank you. Thanks, John.
We're gonna address the bonding track record. And so I'll move into the first slide, which, a point we want to make right at the beginning. Not all bonding that's authorized is actually borrowed. And this is a common misconception. When we bring a bonding initiative to the ballot and it's approved, the money is not automatically borrowed. The aldermen must actually vote to move forward with the actual borrowing. And that's when we actually go out to the market and find out what the rate is going to be, and we try to capitalize on those savings. But of course, as we've seen, some projects aren't feasible. Some projects don't move forward. So I think it's very important to draw a line here and understand that just because we've gone to a referendum in the past doesn't necessarily mean that any money was actually borrowed, that any money was actually taken into the city. So Sheila, I'll let you go ahead.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Barry. Yeah, I mean, a lot of what is coming up in these slides is self-explanatory, but we just thought we would update you on completed projects and some that haven't been completed and provide some answers to ongoing referendum projects. So as you can see, the money, there was a referendum in 2013, and those projects are included on the screen before you. City Hall roof was done. These are all, everything that's been checked off. Police department HVAC and windows, eagle hose roof, generator for the PD, arms roof replacement and HVAC, transfer station and paving at Hilltop Hoes are a few of the projects. I think if you go to the next slide, unless you want me to, yep, some additional projects, PEC demolition, library windows, armory roof, Nolan Field House Road, Ansonia Library, HVAC and HW, Nature Center Parking, Nolan Field Parking Lot, Nolan Field Scoreboard. I don't like when people read off of PowerPoints, but I'll keep going just so that you, if you want to stop me, you can. And Ansonia Riverwalk, that was segment eight, which is complete school security. And the West Main Street Parking Lot, we're all part of that borrowing, that bonded bonding. Somebody have a question? There is still money left in the Nature Center dredging project and the Nolan Field House project. The dredging, when we took a look at it, we had the engineers who did the parking lot also look at the pond and the dredging. And that dollar amount was gonna be much larger than originally anticipated, that project. We have borrowed that, or we haven't used that one. So the dredging project remains in a holding pattern, if you will, until Barry and Attorney Fazey start stomping their feet and saying, we have to wrap everything up. And Nolan Field House, there's been a lot of questions about Nolan Field House, though. When we took a look at the showers and bringing the bathrooms up to code and all of the work that would be associated with that, that too seemed as though it was going to be a much higher number. However, the Public Works Department and Mayor's Office have been working to try to do small aesthetically pleasing improvements to Field House, smaller projects, cutting down trees that are invasive, and painting, et cetera. So those are your remaining projects from 2013. 2016, we bonded again. The projects listed below are those that have been completed. Installed oxygen, that's arms, replaced a light trailer, a vehicle extraction equipment was purchased, a backup generator was purchased, Lucas II chest compressors, communication center for the PD, that's the new facility. Chief, if you want to check in, but all but $40,000, $40,579 has been expended. Portable radios for PD, fire and arms have been purchased. Live cam fingerprint. We can move on to an administration vehicle. I believe that's for PD. Detective vehicle and supervisor vehicle and a detective bureau vehicle have all been purchased. Please, you know, if I've gotten this incorrect, chief, please jump in. One-ton mason dump truck, a half to three-quarter ton pickup truck, and a tractor with a roadside attachment, PW has purchased. You can see the, some of the items that are still remaining. Obviously, the new station, four point, almost five million remaining. Fountain and charter hose sewer lines. I, I think that's $41,948. I just, might be a correction in that. But Front Street and Maple Street pump station roofs, those are, those projects are still remaining. River Street pump station, wash station at PW. John Deere, they did not purchase. And Senior Center relocation, $485,000 remaining. Nature Center roof, $45,000. Those are some of the projects that are remaining. Is there another, another slide? Yep, additional pool of money for Nolan Field House. So altogether, about $40,000 in Nolan Field House. And the remaining projects are Board of Ed projects. Truck and equipment for Ansonia High School. The Colane Access Road, that's where you guys had discussed earlier about transferring money within those Board of Ed projects. Boilers and hot water heater. The Mead School parking and the boiler replacements. Those are, those are the Board of Ed. Or Rich, if you, if you see anything, let me know. Those are the 2016 referendum projects that are still outstanding.
Right, so in terms of outstanding projects, when we have the numbers saying it's outstanding, does that mean that it's been borrowed and we're waiting to spend it? Or that we're authorized to borrow?
Earlier, and when I do talk about referendum projects, I say the same thing. It's important to note again that, you know, you have authorization to spend this. You did not borrow already.
Also, Barry wants to talk a little bit. And again, we still have this, the problem that if you do mute yourself, you get stuck and muted. And I apologize for that, but it's helpful. Barry?
Oh, John, thank you. I didn't have anything to add. I just muted myself and I couldn't unmute myself. Sorry.
Could you also, actually, I'm gonna get back to Barry in a second. But in terms of the rest of the projects, Sheila, so these are projects essentially that we have authorization to move forward with, but simply you're not ready?
Correct, for one reason or another. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to go through those. I just described a couple of the projects and what the holdup was on those. You know, for instance...
Oh, I was gonna note, this is Josh, that that last one on there, the Colane, was the one that we voted on. Obviously, $15,000 is not sufficient to build an access road out of the high school.
Right, right. So you're moving the money around within the Board of Ed project lines. And, you know, we have to come back to this board for authorization to move money around. We can't just indiscriminately move it. And we can't move, say, for instance, Board of Ed money into public works projects. So you have, you have to, you know, the original intent is to spend a certain amount of money on Board of Education projects. Or the original intent is to spend a certain amount of money on, you know, equipment. So you have to stay within that department.
And of course, all this borrowing was done very carefully, careful consideration, whether or not it was the right time to do it. Barry, could you talk a little more about the, just wanna bring up, the city's bond rating?
Yes.
One thing we didn't really touch on before, the significance of the city's current bond rating and what the benchmarks are to make that bond rating and what it means for our borrower right now.
Absolutely, John. The city has a strong bond rating of what's called a AA minus. And just like each of us have our own credit score when we borrow for a mortgage or car loan, I mean, our municipality's borrowing cost is primarily determined by the city's bond rating. So that bond rating is very, very important. I'm not sure if you have this chart in your, in the presentation, John, but last year, the city of Ansonia issued $5 million of bonds back in August of 19 at a rate of 2.11%, which is one of the lowest borrowing rates in the state of Connecticut last year. So that bond rating helps a lot. And the fact that, what determines the bond rating is the management team, the mayor and his finance team and entire management team, fiscal discipline in putting budgets together, reserve levels, fund balance levels, demographics, and how well a community manages debt. So all that comes together. And like I said, the city has an above-average bond rating and one of the strongest in the North Carolina.
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Who is it that prioritizes these projects and pulls the triggers to make them go? Is it the individual department heads to oversee something like as far as like Nolan Field Recreation? Or obviously, the schools? Who spearheads this and says, okay, let's do this, let's move forward?
So it'll typically be the mayor's office in consultation with the departments, taking a look at what the first priorities are, and then bringing it to the Board of Aldermen. Sheila, you want to add anything in terms of how we've coordinated these projects in the past?
Yeah, John is right about that. I mean, facilities maintenance is the responsibility of the Public Works Department. However, we do rely on the departments to tell us, you know, this is a priority or not, or to tell Mike DeLazio the same. So we do, we do work all together on these projects. And of course, the ones that are most emergent get addressed sooner than the other ones. So it's a combination. It's a, hopefully, a line of communication that's open and we're able to work through the projects. But, you know, we've got to push some of them along.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a lot of remaining projects are still to be done. How many are important and justified, you know, moving forward like ASAP as compared to what's more of a, you know, should we do it, can we do it, is it the best time to do it, kind of thing? It just seems like a big list, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big list, but it's not a difficult list to get through. I think there are some projects, which you're right. We're trying to make a decision. Do, you know, do we need to spend more money on this project? Do we, how do we get more money for these projects that are gonna cost more than what was anticipated? But there are others that could be addressed rather quickly. A lot of times, it's dependent on the weather. So you wait spring and the summer season to get a lot of the work done for some of the, like, the water lines or sewer lines thing for the, for the fire departments, if that's what you're referring to. I think you're waiting for...
Well, I mean, I mean, yeah, I am. I've been, as the captain of one of the firehouses, I've been waiting patiently for that. And, you know, I've noted all good things come and turn when they're needed and warranted. And there's, you know, things that have to happen before that. I'm just addressing it more as aldermen. If it's 2020 already, and this was in 2016, you know, what's the newer list look like of things that have to get done that's compounded on top of the 2016 list? You know, so either we gotta do them or wipe them off the list and move on to the next list of greater importance items to do.
Right, well, I think they're, I mean, obviously, they're all important because the voters voted on them and you guys approved them. So I wouldn't say any of them are unimportant. It's just that you do try to prioritize when there's like 100 projects. So, yeah, I agree, we gotta... We gotta wrap them up. We gotta get out, get some quotes and some bids and wrap them up. Agreed.
Thank you. That's all I have.
So that's the condition of the current bonding projects, right? And moving on to what we're looking to move forward with. Clearly, the biggest item is the 65 Main Street project. And for the discussion, I'm going to keep Sheila unmuted, but I'm also going to bring in Chief Cota, Paul Heon, and also the project architect, Brian Yums. So just bear with me while I make sure that all our participants are in the conversation. I'm here, John. You should be in.
Yes.
Just looking for Paul and Brian. I see Paul. Okay. Paul, you're in. And Brian Yums, do we know what number he's at?
Let me, let me send that to you.
So I have several numbers. He's likely one of those. If I could have his last four digits.
Yeah.
And of course, we know Chief Cota. Paul Heon is the Chair of the Police Building Committee. And Brian Yums from Jakunski Yums is the project architect.
All right, guys, stand by. It is an 860 number. Which is like, what, 100 people? Okay, last, last four digits. 9221. No? Okay, hold on. It should be on. Looking for. Yeah, 921, John?
No, sorry. You and your kid and your coffee maker.
Is Paul on?
Yep, Paul and the chief are on.
Paul, if you could give Brian a call, or?
Yes, I'll give it a try.
Thanks.
President Short, how do you wanna handle questions? Do we wanna wait? Presentation is included in its entirety? Or do we wanna pause partway to ask questions?
I think we're gonna go all the way through and then you guys can ask whatever you want on, on any items.
Yes. Paul, anyway, we're trying to locate this number. There's a lot of numbers.
Hey, hey, Josh?
Yes.
Could I just, so we're, we're in the package. It's $5 million, not $8 million. Correct?
The total is $5, $5 million.
Or the PD?
No, PD is 3.1. For the bonding?
Yes.
The bonding is 3.1.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, so the total is $7 million.
Little package was five, like six or something with the rows.
Right, okay. Glad to confirm. Thank you.
Maybe in the essence of time, President Short, if we can, I got a couple of questions on these first slides. As soon as, as soon as these guys are ready to go forward, I'm happy to just fork it back over to them. But if, if there's time, I got some maybe questions for Barry. Looks like they're back.
Yes, hey Sheila, he's calling in now.
Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Just in the nick of time.
Remember, the nice thing about these meetings is no matter how late they go, you're already home.
Isn't that great?
Not much of a consolation, but okay.
It's a bit, I think it's a big one.
Yeah.
We've been home.
You can hide the number of slides in the slideshow, too.
I mean, we're almost through the 800, right? Didn't we make it through like 10%?
Are we gonna get a copy of these slides?
Sure, of course.
All right.
And the slides are recorded with the presentation, too.
Lot to take in. That was my chair, sorry.
Okay, Paul, do we know what number he's calling in under?
He said he had all the information and he's gonna call right in. Here from him, I will call him right back. The last four that I have is 5968.
President Short?
Yes.
You could go on the record tonight for the longest meeting ever.
Yeah, and my goal always has been that shortest meeting ever in the history of Ansonia, but this is not yet.
You, you appear to be running the longest one ever.
Then this would not come anywhere near as close to being the longest.
Far, far longer.
Challenge accepted.
Got a few more hours to go.
I'm gonna go take a nap. Let me know when he's on the line and I'll come back.
You wanna move to different slides or how would you?
Can we move forward and cover some normal business and jump back to this? I think we only have executive session left.
Yeah, can we cover the other projects or come back to them when they're all on the line? Or?
We, this is, is by far the larger component.
Okay.
He's calling into this meeting, correct?
What was the last number?
68.
I'm not seeing a 68.
Hey, this is reflecting really poorly on me. You guys don't have your stuff together here. What's, what else can we do? Do we have any jokes or?
Josh, permission to ask questions to the financial advisor, Mr. Bernavy?
Does anybody else have a question?
I could take, I could take Barry off to answer a couple of questions, I guess, just for the sake of having some time filled.
Yeah, he's, he's listed here, so if you wanna try that.
Yep, Barry's been with us the entire time.
Okay.
Hey Barry?
Yes.
We, one of the Aldermen has a question for you.
Sure.
Hi Barry, this is Tarek Roslin. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Appreciate it. If you could, there was a, 11, which was the bar graph chart of the debt maturity schedule, both current and proposed. It seemed to be that that bar chart was in conflict with the previous table. It looked like there was a lot of years on that chart. This was slide 11, I think, and slide 10 and 11, I think. So it looks like if we include, if we include the proposed debt service, there's quite a few more number of years there, more than a couple of years, where the combined debt service is significantly higher than where we are right now at 2021, or, or 2021 in the short term. At that view, can you just reconcile between those two slides and which one is, was accurate?
Well, if, if you go, John, if you could go to the spreadsheet. Back one, maybe? Yeah, I know this, the spreadsheet's a bit busy. But if you look at column L. So if you look at the, the early years, which is a little harder, you know, it's about a million seven, a million eight is the city's existing debt service. So in, if, if this were to happen in fiscal 2023, the city would have to increase its debt service budget by about $372,000. So say you, you do that. Then the, the debt service there goes up to 2.2167,000 in fiscal '23. So once debt service is up higher, you know, that, that level's up higher, then the following year, it would have to go up another 244,000. So it would peak in fiscal '24. And then it would drop down each year. So, um, does that make sense there? There'll be two years where it would increase.
So it's a year-to-year change, not a change versus the base year.
Right, it's a change compared to the previous year.
So. I understand.
So.
We were saying, essentially, we, we peak out. But, you know, I think it's important to recognize for people that are looking at the overall maturity schedule. So it sounds like the, the two are, you know, the, probably the bar chart was pulled off of this spreadsheet. Is that right?
Yes.
All right, so if we go to the next page, page 11, you know, I think it's important for people to note that this is not, I mean, the, the way it was presented to me before was that there was, there was a, relative to the base year that of, of this year, that we would be seeing declining debt service in two years or three years' time. But it's, that's, that's different than what's, what I'm, the way I'm realizing it here today is that actually, if we're looking at this and compared to the base year, year one, we have many years of increased debt service over what we're experiencing now. Yes, we're, we start to decline. We peak out in 2024. But we have many years there, over a decade of increased debt service. So it's not that the sort of existing debt is dropping off in proportion. It's, you know, into the year, to the base year.
If I may interject, can you go back to slide 10 a second? Column E, if you look at it, you could see the, the, the progressive roll-off of the debt, the change in debt service year-over-year that is declining.
Yeah, I understand that. Maybe I'm alone in this, in this understanding of the, of the way it was presented. My understanding was that this was representing a decline in the debt service relative to our current debt service in 2020 or 2021 is presented in year one here. That we would have, you know, the, the sort of future debt service would be net, and that would be less than what we're paying in debt service this year. And that's not the case. That's not the case for another sort of years from now. That we would, that we would come back. So right now, let's say 2021 is 1.75 million in debt service. We don't get back there until 2034. We would obviously be in a better position if, you know, if we, if we didn't have additional proposed debt. But, you know, I, I think it's important for people to recognize, anybody else that might have had the similar confusion that what we were being presented with was that we were, ultimately, we could borrow more and, and the existing debt service was dropping off at a rate such that our debt service would be declining. Even if we borrow more, that's not the case, you know? And so I just wanted, you know, thanks for the clarification on that. And, you know, I just wanted to point that out as well.
So Barry also mentioned in his presentation that premiums could be used to flatten that, that increase. And I think, you know, Alderman Roslin, you are right to the extent that we, you know, we've said that we'd like to hold the line, that we'd like the increase in debt to not impact the bottom line for the taxpayers. That's why I tried to highlight what Barry was talking about when he was mentioning the premiums, the use of the premiums to mitigate that increase. Barry, could you touch on that a little bit about how this would, how this chart would be affected if we were able to secure premiums for the debt?
Right, John, you hit it right on with the premiums. That would give the, the city flexibility to help smooth those peaks out, if you will. I still think in the long run, that, that debt's gonna have to trend to go higher for the next couple of years. It'll peak out in a couple of years, then it'll start its downward trajectory again. But with available funds that the city has, plus the premium, plus any use of like a debt service fund or maybe some, some use of capital reserve funds, you could smooth that, those increases. you could smooth those increases off. And again, in a couple of years, there will be a slight increase going up before it starts to taper off again. Now, remember, this analysis is incorporating $8 million of existing authorized debt that the city has not issued yet, plus potentially another $5 million for new capital projects. So that's $13 million. So you might say, well, can you issue $13 million with absolutely no impact on debt service? No, I mean, there is going to be a slight increase in debt for a couple of years there. But with the use of premium and other reserve funds, we can mitigate that, smooth it out is really the term. Now, in a perfect world, it happens once in a blue moon that you hit a community that says, hey, listen, next year, we've got a million dollar drop off in debt service because our middle school has paid off. And if that were the case, you could slot in, you know, millions more of new debt with actually no impact at all in the baseline. But with this 13, potentially $13 million of debt, there will be a slight increase in debt service for a few years. But again, I think the city has a number of different possibilities to smooth that impact.
Great thing. If I could follow up, but you know, cut me off anytime. We're ready to proceed on with this.
We have Brian Humes ready. Do we want to, I mean, we can deviate back to the financials or we can move to the police station part. It's up to your pleasure.
I'd say let's continue through the presentation and then we'll come back and we'll have any questions that we have.
Great. Okay, so for now, I'm going to unmute. And Barry, thank you very much. Please stay with us. I'm going to unmute Brian Humes. Mr. Humes, can you hear me?
I can, John. I'm here.
Thank you very much. Okay, so can you see the shared screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so Chief, you're still with us?
I am.
And Paul, you're with us?
Yes, sir.
And Sheila, you're with us?
Here.
And Brian?
Yes.
So obviously, this is the biggest piece of the proposed borrowing, 3.1 million for the police station and municipal building. So a lot of questions centered around this particular project, a lot of it centering around how we got to this point. And we're going to address things, starting with a timeline. And for the sake of, for the sake of expediency, your basic highlights on the timeline are the initial project being proposed for Olson Drive happening first. Then we moved forward after consulting and formulating a budget with Jakunski Humes, bonding being approved for $12 million. Subsequent to that, the project did change course when the city realized that it could get more value by going with an existing building downtown, the former Feral Office Building, which it ended up purchasing for 1.8 million through eminent domain, giving us not only a building, but also a parking lot. And then the final piece of the puzzle was the actual contract for the work that was executed in the amount of 11.6 million. So a lot of the questions revolved around that timeline and, you know, how we proceeded to move through the contract to the present point today where we're looking for additional funding. Now, the entire time, project has been overseen by the Police Building Commission, the police staff and our Economic Development Director and Mayor's Office. The meetings of which are public and are online, you simply have to go through to the right area in the police, in the general police commission's page. So, and Brian, you can jump in here, but one of the main points to stress is the original project always projected 9 million in hard costs and 3 million in soft costs. And so that was the initial scope of our project. The new location brought some additional factors into the mix. The most significant was the previously uncontemplated purchase of a site for $1.8 million and additional costs for outfitting a larger building. The most prominent ones being the need for access to a whole nother floor. So those were cost drivers. The city clearly, to cut to the chase, still entered into an $11.6 million contract. And as I'll have Brian elaborate on, essentially, the commission looked at this and for several reasons decided it was still prudent to proceed with the contract. Number one, there was an agreement by the building commission and the mayor's office that certain steps might be taken to mitigate the costs, to be able to fit what clearly looked like a more expensive project into the contract price. And those included eliminating the tower, changing the entrance of the police station towards the east Main Street area, reusing existing equipment instead of buying new equipment and possibly even phasing in the project. Also, we were taking a look at this, the contract at a time when the bids came back and we had 60 days. The city had 60 days to either accept the low bid price or risk losing that bid. And the highest bid in this scenario was 3 million. So there was a true risk that if the bids let go, that the project would be increasing in an amount of a million dollars. And finally, just to kind of wrap it up, there was a potential to reduce the purchase price or reassign the purchase cost at that point in time. If you remember, this was prior to resolving the eminent domain issue with Shaw. And it's worked out very positive in a larger development deal, but at this time, there was still a possibility that wasn't yet on the table. There was still a possibility that 1.8 million dollars could be dealt with in a different way. But at the end of the day, the Police Building Commission recommended very strongly against any alterations to the project. They believed there was a serious danger to public safety that would result from changing factors like the tower and the entrance and believed that any changes would really just increase the long-term costs. I want to bring in Brian to kind of give a little bit of a background. I kind of described everything in a nutshell. But Brian has been with us since the beginning of the project and could shed a lot of light on how the project scope has, the core project scope has basically stayed the same despite shifting locations. Brian?
Thanks, John. That was a good presentation. It took a lot of the points that I was going to actually make. So I think the summary that you have in front of everybody is factual. It's accurate. And where we started from a hard cost projection of $9 million, that projection would have constructed a standalone 26,000 square foot police department for police only. So we are still contending and saying with the bids that we receive that $9 million is outfitting the upper floor of 24,000 square feet of existing space. We're doing all relative, we're all doing all new construction on that floor. So the $9 million is going toward outfitting a police facility for the city of Ansonia. Now, where is the deviation from 9 million to 11.6? Are the other floors? Is the tower? Is site work? We're doing minimal site work. We're outfitting a new emergency generator. But it's not going to complete all of the other floors. We are bringing the building up to code compliance for occupancy. We are replacing all of the exterior windows. So we're not just taking the upper floor and replacing windows. We're replacing all of the windows on all of the floors. We are making the entire exterior envelope energy efficient. We replaced the entire roof. And we're bringing accessibility to all floors through the new tower. New public entrance is being oriented toward Main Street. We're utilizing the parking lot for downtown businesses. So there's a lot of other value that we feel the project is bringing to the city in addition to just building only a police facility. The parking decks are allowing the police facility to occupy the site and not impact any downtown parking, any public parking on the parking site that's ground level. But we've looked at the challenges that the project brought with trying to stay within a $9 million hard costs. And when the bids came in at 11.6, we attempted to get that 11.6 back to a $9 million hard cost figure. Suggestions were put out. It's called value engineering. And value engineering was costed out by Banton Construction. And we did get values back from Banton that says, yes, you could only replace the windows on the upper floor and not replace the windows on the other levels. But when we looked at what would be the savings in the contract, we also had to advise the city, if you accepted that credit value, the cost to go back and ultimately replace those windows at a later date, knowing that you'd have to get back into the exterior wall, it would almost double the cost of what you were getting for credit. So yes, we could eliminate first costs, but we were only deferring cost for a higher number in the future for the city. So we explained all this to the building commission. We explained all this to the building committee. And taking the information that we gathered, we didn't recommend that this was a good move for the city. So it was the direction to take the low bid because we had a reputable contractor. We had a market-driven cost for the project. And we also were feeling that if we had to reject the bid, we would have to take this project and go out to rebid. In the market that we were in, we have found rebids end up to be a higher number at rebid because sometimes the low bidders would back out, subcontractors would back out, and so the numbers you're left with would be a higher number. So you are running the risk of losing a low bid with a reputable contractor and taking a risk that the number may be lower, maybe not lower. So we felt we had the right combination, but ultimately, you didn't have enough money. The city made the decision to go with Banton Construction with the low bid. They made that decision knowing that they had to supplement funding. And it is now up before you as to how they're planning to supplement that. So I hope I've answered the process that we took from receipt of bids, trying to look at value engineering options for the city to get the number lower, but ultimately not finding any value for the city in those ideas and suggestions.
And so Brian, as we talked in preparation for this, we talked about what that 3.1 million would comprise of. And I believe you conceptualized it as 2.6 towards hard costs and 500 towards contingent costs?
That is correct. The 3.1, you go from nine to 11.6 is 2.6. But we need, we still need a contingency. The contingency is for unknown and unrelated construction that maybe is found out during construction. And with the contingency, it's there as a safety net. If we don't use it, we don't, it's not money that we turn back. You just don't borrow to that level. It's something that was there for unforeseen. We are 26% of the way through the contract. We are doing very well with contingency. But we still have three quarters of the project to complete. So we find it prudent to have a contingency in case there are unforeseen. And in an existing building, when you're renovating, there's ultimately will be some unforeseen. So that's the breakdown.
And now in terms of, I think that takes us a lot through the history of what happened, the timeline and exactly what the funds, you know, why the funds are needed, what the funds will be put towards is essentially laid out by the contract. And that contract is the scope of the project and essentially lays out the expenses of the project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that contract has been made available, is available to the public, has been made available to the alderman. And certainly, it's something that the group can review. And of course, as you've hit on, this is certainly a police station first and foremost, but there's a potential here for more. And some of the questions that have come up have been very directly at the hearing and even before this meeting. What will go in the lower floor, the lower floor? And I, and at this point, that is to the discretion of the Board of Aldermen, of course. There was talk about the potential for a senior center there, and that remains the case. Although it's important to understand that the senior center, wherever they relocate to, that was a separate bonding project. So around, little under 500,000 remains for the relocation of the seniors. And whether or not it's going to be one of the components in 65 Main Street is yet to be seen. We've also talked about regionalization and regionalization efforts. That's been a question that's come up several times. And Chief, you could talk a little more to this, but the one component that's been in discussion has been a firing range, making a regional range part of this facility. But it's not part of the budget of the project. It's something I know that you and your predecessor, Chief Hale, have done work on, reaching out to other communities. You discussed a little bit with us of regionalization in general and the range specifically.
What we did was, part of Chief Kevin Hale and myself, more Kevin initially, when we were speaking of putting a range in, in the early stages of the project, the chief reached out to our local representatives and senators and even sent a letter to the governor looking to get some bonding from the state to create a regional range. We signed on with Ansonia, Derby, Timor, Orange and Woodbridge to share, hopefully, share the services or at least the upkeep costs and maintenance costs to a range if we were able to obtain funding from the state. As you know, bonding projects are kind of at a standstill at the state level. That is still something that we're working toward, not only through a range.
No, actually, they're moving forward with the bond projects, Chief.
Well, the last we knew, they were not. So we haven't heard anything regarding that project. So hopefully, we will. But those five towns are not only interested in a range, but also a regional training facility and potentially a regional dispatch area that would do regional police, fire, EMS and such. Although that's a much larger scope, the purpose of our project that we're speaking about now is to outfit an operational floor for the police department with all services up and running for the Ansonia Police Department with a second phase, if you would like to call that potentially, for regionalization through state money. There is state money that's available for 911 consolidation setups. There's hopefully bonding money available for a range. So those are projects that we're looking for in the future. But right now, the most pressing issue is completing the project that we're in the middle of now, get this building up and running and operational within the timeframe agreed to in the contract. So that's, I guess, a long story short for you, what our hopes are for the future of the building as we get going and get down into that 65 Main Street.
Obviously, it makes sense that there's a lot of curiosity about what can be, what the lower floor could be utilized as. But there's no shortage of uses. Certainly, the more consolidation, the more cost savings can be realized. On the other hand, regionalization opportunities could be a way to even bring revenue into the town while increasing service levels. The bottom line is, nothing has been committed yet. We're focusing on the core project and it's really going to be the Board of Aldermen, working in tandem with Chief Coda and our building committee to determine what the best use for the floor will be. Terms of value, though, of course, you're getting not only the building, you're getting the lot. Brian, could you speak a little bit to the value? You know, if this project, if the bonding goes through and the project is a $15 million project. You've worked on facilities, correct me if I'm wrong, all across the state of Connecticut. Not just public safety facilities, but many municipal facilities. How does this measure up to the cost of some of the comparable projects that your firm has worked on in the last 10 years?
That's a good question. And it's hard to compare city to city because the facilities are not identical in each city. But it's a good comparison to say, what are you getting for a dollars per square foot compared to another facility? We just finished a Bethel facility, which was 28,000 square feet, new construction. And the cost there was in excess of $15 million. And what they got for that facility was just a police department. I think if you compare the square footage of what you have in Ansonia with enclosed parking, future addition for a future build out on the first floor. With enclosed parking, future addition for a future build out on the first floor. You're getting the entire exterior envelope renovated for that floor. You're getting still the police department. So the value that you're getting on a dollars per square foot basis is. Much more favorable than the communities that are just doing police only facilities for for much higher dollars per square foot.
So then so that's from a firm that certainly is well versed in police facility, safety facility. How many, how many projects of this nature have, has your firm handled, Brian?
John, over the last 25 years, it's been over 90 facilities throughout New England.
So it's an extensive knowledge and while no town is the same. Again, this is more than a police station, this this is a public building. And again, the parking lot can't be underestimated in terms of access to the downtown. Also, this is something that Barry could speak to either now or later. But if we had originally gone forward under the previous market conditions with the 15 million in borrowing. It likely would be at a higher rate and it would likely be less advantageous. And of course, that's looking things, you know, in hindsight. But again, one of the reasons that, you know, there's two big reasons, I'll say, that we're proposing this. Number one, there's a need, but number two, it's advantageous for the city. And if conditions existed that made it difficult or overly costly for this bonding to go through. The recommendation would be different. It would be to make with with what we have, even though it it's certainly not the recommendation of the police or the building commission. But you have both advantageous circumstances and a need. We'll address some other questions that did come up. And of course, there were many questions on many topics. And one of them was whether or not there were two phases to the building work. Given a construction company, Pepe Construction's work to remove some tiles and to extend lighting to the site. And this was not part of the construction of the station. It was work performed through Public Works. And the aim, of course, was to provide lighting to do some assessment. So the city could determine what exactly it needed to include in the bids. And to also determine the extent of the environmental remediation needed. But this certainly became the city's building before the contract was entered into or and before the bids went out. And work needed to be done so we knew what we were dealing with. And so there were no two phases of construction. It was simply the city needing to hire someone who was capable of not only extending light in the site. As there was no electricity connected originally at all, no ability to see. And also to do some tile removal to figure out what was behind the tiles. So we had an idea of what the environmental remediation could be. I know Sheila, Brian, you wanted to speak a little more to that assessment.
Yeah, John, I'd like to add a couple of comments to that. That was work that we had recommended to the city. To be completed during the design portion of the project. We had to look at mechanical, existing electrical. And all of the mechanical rooms and electrical rooms have no natural light. So when we were at the facility trying to do investigative work for our design services. We were having to do it through flashlights. And it was not productive. And we felt that it was not going to provide a good solution based on what we could only see through flashlights. So we had requested for a contractor to bring in some power. So we could plug in some lighting, so we could review what is in existing spaces. That did not have the ability to bring in natural light. And we also requested that all the ceiling tiles be removed. So we could see all of the utilities that were above suspended ceilings. We knew these ceilings were going to come out eventually. So it was prudent to take them out to see above those ceilings. So we could include any design work within our contract documents. And then the general contractor would be responsible for everything that we had on our design documents. So we had requested this, and that was the reason that we felt it was prudent.
Environmental, there was a question, was environmental ever considered? And of course, it was. There was some additional environmental issues revealed in relation to the tower. And so, you know, I'll let Brian elaborate a little on that. But of course, environmental is typically incorporated into into projects. But also, yes, there was a little extra, but Brian, you can fill in the details.
Sheila, did you want to say something?
I mean, I I just want to say when you're dealing with these types of buildings. Even when you do an environmental assessment and you have a removal plan in place. And you have an LEP, a licensed environmental professional, you still uncover things that you anticipate. And.
Yeah, of course.
Getting a lot of feedback, a lot of like. So one of those things was, well, for instance, the elevator. There were tiles in the elevator that we couldn't get to because the electricity. You know, we hadn't, we hadn't electrified the building. So some of those tiles had to be removed, that was asbestos slated. And you mentioned the tower, that was another, that was another area where there was more contaminated earth. Dirt unearthed than had anticipated as well. Brian, I'm.
All of the, all of the remediation of asbestos. And there was also asbestos in the roofing flashing. So we had existing roofing had to be done under asbestos remediation. All of that asbestos scope was included in the 11.6 contract with Banton. So 11.6 million includes all of the asbestos abatement that was being performed. The additional was for unsuitable soils that we've encountered during excavation for the tower footings. So within that scope of the footings, additional soils and unsuitable soils are being removed as remediation.
And that is, that does directly address the the two questions we've had on environmental. Regionalization, we already did touch on. Again, we're looking towards that actively, not only with the first, with the first full floor. But also with the potential range project that Chief Coda and Chief Hale commenced.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
How much is the square footage on that available area?
Which which section, Tony?
The area that's not going to be used for Antonia PD.
The second floor?
Yeah.
Right, that's, is that 22,000 or 20,000?
20,000 square feet.
So I'm just curious, have any feelers been put out to other state or federal law enforcement agencies? See if they're interested in leasing those areas, being a part of a law enforcement building, ATF, State Police, Judicial Services?
Has reached out, Tony, I think that's a good question, right? Chief, I think you've done some outreach.
Yeah, I mean, locally, for our regional areas, we've not reached out federally. Again, this is for us, the the main project is to get the police department operational. It was too big of a process to do both because we didn't know where the where the funding would come from. If there was additional funding required. For, so, yeah, we we are looking at that, that would be our next phase. I don't have an answer for you, I can't tell you, yes, I will have this agency in this building and, you know.
Understandable, right?
But it's it's something that is definitely an option. We'd have to look into when you're talking about leasing and making money on it, that's something we'd have to review. If you ever decided to go for accreditation, there are some strict rules that you can, what you can and can't have within a facility. So those are, those are questions we still have to answer. You know, down the road, but but no, nothing is really off the table right now as far as regionalization. I think once we have a building that's operational, I I think you may see interest will be drawn naturally to the new building. And we may be able to to fill an empty void for another agency or agency, yes.
Hey, John, I'd like to interject here. John?
Sure.
As a committee, one of the things that we've looked at is, and we didn't call it regionalization. We thought maybe the shared resources. I know tonight, one of the aldermen talked about. An increase of crime in the city as far as fire break-ins and whatnot. Our thought was even to incorporate some of the towns together, maybe come up with a task force. Who would work out of our building and they may hit problem areas in different towns. Something as simple as that to to put the building to good use. As a committee, our goal has always been that this has to be the safest and most secure building in the city. And I think we have to be careful how that, how that floor is utilized. Couple of things that we have recommended, like the chief has talked about, maybe a regional training. Or a shared resources training room that not only the police would use, but the fire department could use. That aren't. That it would be open to. The professional people for that. Those are the things that we're hoping that down the road, that those things can be incorporated into the building. Certainly, we thought about it and I I think we just have to be careful on on how that floor is utilized. Because certainly we don't want to compromise the security or safety of anyone at that, in that building.
So so can I just interject? And this is Alderman and Stroman. When this, when this was first talked about, one of the things that they talked about would be a police department. And also the possibility of the senior center. We seem to be getting away from the senior center. And we need to have more discussion on that. Because that's what the original proposal was supposed to be about. So I forget about senior center, thank you.
As far as a committee, as we've, we've welcomed the, we thought that. To partner, the best partner with the police department would probably be our senior citizens. You know, certainly that it would be, you know, you you know your clientele, you know, you have certain hours. Whatnot, and as a committee, we always thought that if there was another group coming in. Building that certainly a partnership with the senior citizens could be worked out. As a committee, we we've thought about that.
So as I said in the beginning, that it's an open question. And it's a question for the Board of Aldermen ultimately to answer. And so senior center, certainly, it's on the table. And while we've been looking at different alternatives, 65 has always been one of the alternatives. And of course, ideas for regionalization also have been floating out there. So the the bottom line, the answer to that question of, again, what's going to go in that floor? Is we're looking, the city is trying to work together to get the best possible tenants, if you will, on that floor.
I I think the priority is to get that floor finished because you don't want the PD in there with nothing underneath them. That that's not a good idea to have a vacant space that large underneath them. So we're, you know, again, we're we're working to try to get that resolved.
In fact, that was my next slide, it's actually senior center, believe it or not. So, you know, exactly, so senior center is already bonded, they have relocation funds, and it is very much a possibility. But again, and again, it's it's a question that the mayor's office can't ultimately answer. It's the Board of Aldermen that's going to have to determine that. And to Sheila's point, you know, I share, you know, the the mayor's office priority here. We'd like to come to that decision sooner than later because it would be a shame to not utilize this resource. Again, you know, back to my point earlier, this is an investment in the downtown at a time where the city needs investments. And so the smarter the investment, stronger the investment, the more we're helping, we could aid our downtown economy. Our city economy, really our valley economy by 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 creating this this resource, this facility. Go ahead, Tony.
No, did I stop someone?
Well, I thought you asked a question.
Yeah, I was gonna, when is the estimated completion date of the police department?
I think Brian and Sheila are best to answer that.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian, but I I I know when the contract ends, I can tell you.
Realistically, once construction, construction done and looking at a move in date, off the hip, not holding you to it, just kind of an idea.
Yeah, so you're looking, you're looking at October, November, 2020.
Okay, so so fall, fall, wintertime of this year?
Yes.
Okay, if the money's not approved in bonding for the space underneath it. Obviously, that space is going to be put on hold until funding is available for it. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, what was that move out date that the senior center had to be out of their facility?
There's, there is likely, and and again, this is a conversation that it it's it's a tangential matter. With the senior center that can't be avoided. There's, it's unlikely that the seniors would be returning to their space. We're very, very close on a closing date. And given the current situation with COVID-19, making it probably not advisable. To have seniors congregated in large numbers anytime soon. It is very unlikely that they're going to go back to their current location. However, the the sort of the necessity to to not gather seniors together. Has created this sort of layover period that would probably be well suited to both a move into 158 or 65 Main. The urgency of getting a a home immediately is not as as urgent anymore. Because it simply likely wouldn't be safe. Simply wouldn't be safe to be trying to get the seniors into a location as early as June.
And just to update this board, I spoke with Shaw today and they've signed the paperwork necessary for the closing. That paperwork is going to come back to us, we're going to sign it and it's a, as simple as that.
And you said that that floor is what, 22,000 square feet, you said?
20, Tony, yep.
20, 20,000? Has any conceptual drawing or ideas been laid out if it was the senior center, how all that space would be used?
Yes. And Diane, and working with the community commission and one of the architects from. Yeah, Fletcher Thompson, thank you.
Okay.
They did do a preliminary drawing.
Okay, Diane, you have that drawing?
Somewhere, it's probably, yeah. And it was between 8,000 to 10,000 square feet.
So it was half of the actual available square footage, obviously.
That's what we want, yes, when we look at it, yeah.
So that that kind of leads into, Alderman's question kind of leads into the tail end here of 65 Main Street. What if the funding isn't approved? And very bluntly, if the funding isn't approved, the project can't be completed as intended. Which is going to result in a couple of different options. If if it's not going to be borrowed funding, it's going to be have, it's going to have to be budgeted funding. And if you're going to budget $3 million in order to complete the project. You're looking at likely about a three to four mil tax increase if we were to put this into the 2020, 21 budget. Another option is, of course, not to budget it and not to borrow it, in which case you're going to delay the project. Remember that when the contract expires, Banton won't hang around, they will leave. So if you're going to go back later to do other components, they'll have to remobilize at a higher cost. You're going to probably go back out to bid, correct, Brian and Sheila, if I'm wrong, to?
You would have to, yeah. Well, their contract would expire.
The contract would be over.
Right.
Correct.
And what you'd be left with unfortunately is you'd be risking, A, not having a functional police station. And B, you certainly wouldn't have use of the rest of the building. Which would mean unfortunately, a fallow floor that is just as large as the police station floor. And again, if this is being envisioned as a total project here, not completing it is going to make that cost. Higher and higher as you go into the future. And if it's not borrowing, it it's going to be a cost that's going to be carried directly in the budget.
Well, it could be a now or never situation, if we don't do it now, it can never happen.
And tragic because you bought a whole building only to use half of it, that that certainly wouldn't be a wise use in funds. As as Brian has elaborated on, 15 million for a facility that includes not only. A top of the line police station, but also an entire separate space just as large. For regional operations, community operations, that is value for the money. And to not go forward with it, it basically creates quite a waste of resources.
Do we, do we have a plan of using all that space? We had the funding, including like. We had the funding, including like the senior center. I'm just throwing things out there, offices, fire marshal's offices, chiefs.
The idea is that, so Alderman Spigaro, you could almost locate City Hall and all city services in that floor. It's so large.
Right.
So the answer is, could we fill it easily? The question is, what's the right fit? And so that's been a very deliberate process. And I I think you're really starting with the senior center, you're the Board of Aldermen is considering options, trying to determine if that's the right fit. But as you move forward, I think if you were in a rush to fill it, as long as it was outfitted, it had the heating and the cooling, the windows, I think you'd be able to fill that many times over.
Then we should just do it and get it over with and fill it and be done and move on to bigger and better projects. Instead of dwelling on it time and time again and figuring out what we're going to do, just just do it, just do it, just fill it up, you know. Who wants to go in there? Who wants a nice new shiny offices and buildings? Board of Ed, Fire Marshal, Police, City, Tax Board, a bigger meeting hall, no, Community Center.
Exactly, a community center. They did talk about having that because a lot of times the the youth have to pay to have a meeting in the Boys and Girls Club or have a meeting at all.
I mean, you got Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, organizations that could use a place to call a home.
They they talked about having a community room, not a center, but they did talk about having a community room, right, Paul?
Yes, that's correct.
But they are having a community room.
Right. So that's, I I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of possibilities. I think to speak to the questions that we were asked, the the answer is there's a lot of possibilities, but nothing decided yet. But it's all a moot point if the funding doesn't get approved, either through borrowing or through budgeting. The additional funding is needed to get there. So if that answers the questions there, I'm going to move, of course, Alderman, feel free when the presentation is done at this meeting and and of course in the future to continue to to follow up. But for the sake of wrapping up our conversation tonight, going to move into the road projects. And the answer is actually pretty straightforward to these questions. A lot of questions were asked about how the road projects are determined. Is there a study? Are the streets selected ahead of time? How does this, do the decisions make, get made? And really, in the past, at least for the past eight years, we have not had a locked in stone schedule of streets and infrastructure repairs to be made before the borrowing. And the reason is to stay flexible because of changing needs and changing conditions. Essentially, the city picks the figure based on what it could afford. There's no doubt that there's need out there with our infrastructure and our roads. Ansonia is an older city and honestly, eight years ago, we truly ramped up our investment into the streets and the roads. And you're going to find that you're never truly able to meet that demand with what we could afford. So it's about selecting, or at least the way we've handled it in the past up till today, is that we select the amount that we could afford and go from there. In consultation with our Public Works Department, who are the eyes on the ground, and ultimate approval through the Board of Aldermen, we decide what roads will be paved and what projects will be accomplished. If you were just to try to meet all of the demand all at once, you would never be able to borrow enough. It's, the demand is that large. If the Aldermen want to do that differently, to try to button down exactly what streets are going to be done and exactly what projects are going to be done, certainly that's a possibility. But it has not been the way that we've done it in the past. So why is there a $1.5 million figure for roads? Because roads and infrastructure are an important project and we believe this is what we could afford to borrow at this given time. And how do they get determined? They get determined with consultation between the mayor's office, the Board of Public Works, the our Public Works Superintendent and our Aldermen. You could elaborate a little more on that as, you know, for the last eight years, we've operated in that manner. Sheila, are you muted?
Oh, I'm right here, sorry. You want me to elaborate on the process, John?
So if you have anything to add with that, you know, in in terms of, you know, the the way we have in the past approached funding for infrastructure and road.
Yeah, I mean, I I would just say that, you know, we want to, we want to be very careful about our estimates. We we want to make sure we're consulting with engineers and professionals to to get that number to where where it's a more refined number. And I guess I would say we're getting better as we go along. Because, you know, you want to make sure you've got the right amount of funds for each project. You don't want the projects hanging out there because they can't get funded. So.
Sheila, the questions from the residents on this particular item are, well, what projects are included? And, you know, I I was sort of laying out there that typically we we don't have set projects. We know that there's a big demand and we move forward with what we could afford. But can you add a little more detail in terms of what projects would be tackled with this money if it does go ahead and is borrowed?
With with the total amount, John?
With with what's under road projects with 1.5?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I I wanted to say road and infrastructure projects because there's a lot of stuff that goes along with just paving roads. There's a lot of work underneath the surface, if you will, like water and sewer lines and gas lines and all the things that make up the structure that need to be addressed as well. And I know WPCA has some some long term needs that we might be able to address as long as it's included in infrastructure. So there might be a portion of those funds that could be used for, to help WPCA out. A portion of those funds used to mill and pave the roads. But a lot of times, I will point out is you are backing into a number. You want to make sure, as Barry was discussing earlier on, you want to make sure that number is is not, is not too large so that you're not seeing an effect, too much of an effect in a negative direction for the city to accommodate. And again, you know, I I think we did talk about a little debt dropping off. And I think Barry had said that initially, along with the premium. So we did talk about that and that is, that is a reality. There is some debt dropping off. There is.
Old debt dropping off, you know.
So you're back, you're essentially backing into a number sometimes because you don't want to borrow too much. You don't want that, you don't want that to to affect the taxpayers.
You know, and of course, it's a balance. You're trying to do as much as you can without overburdening the taxpayers. And, you know, it, the proposal reflects that balance. Onto recreation, again, this is the smallest item, but essentially the mayor's office and Sheila believed that a study would really help direct future expenditures into our recreational fields and facilities. That there's certainly work to be done, some of it seems very obvious, but that a plan may give us more for the money. And that 100,000 for a consultant creating a plan would not be a burdensome amount to get to where we needed to be. Sheila, do you want to elaborate anymore on Rick Rick?
Yeah, I mean, we had gotten repeated requests from the sports leagues that, you know, we need, we need to improve this field or we have more, we have more participants than we can accommodate. And I don't think in the history of Ansonia that that a rec study or feasibility study has been done. I know we're a small city and and I know Jeff Coppola has a great handle on, on, you know, the needs of the community. But but I think a thorough needs and feasibility study for our recreational facilities. I I think times have changed, it's 2020, who's, you know, what sports are outdated, what sports are more popular. I think that, I think that would be extremely helpful, helpful to me in terms of securing grant funds and helpful to the community in terms of, you know, okay, let's talk in reality now, what do we really need here? What facilities do we need to invest funding in? That's more of what I was talking about, getting professional advice about what needs to be improved and what what fields and what sports need enhancements. So, yeah, it's a small amount of money and you don't typically see that in a bond authorization. But thought it might be at least good to to be aware of that and to think about perhaps including that.
So obviously, this presentation is designed to address the the hot topics that were raised with the questions. There is another bonding proposal for fire vehicles, but there really weren't questions specific to the fire vehicles, more vehicles in general, whether or not there was a schedule for replacement, how that's been done in the past. That's a bit beyond the scope of of the present bonding initiative. Although I'll say again, it essentially the thought behind that is trying to get fire, our fire volunteers and fire department, the capital they need, again, without increasing the budget. Alderman Yaman and President Short, if you'd like to speak to those, to this specific request. Again, there aren't, there weren't really many questions on target specifically for the fire request.
Right, so we did have Joe Yaman, is he unmuted as well?
Yeah.
Okay, Joe Yaman and I and Alderman Cassetti are all on the fire commission as well. So we had access to the capital plan that the fire department had developed years ago and we worked with, worked with the chiefs. And that's sort of where that that came out, came about was trying to work off some of those things that were coming up on on their capital plan. So they did, they did a good job of planning for the future and they're actively reworking that capital plan actively, you know, to update it, you know, as leadership changes over every other year, every two years with the chief. But Joe, do you want to add anything?
Well, I'll just add kind of what I did the last time is just say, you know, in speaking with the chiefs, money would be sort of laid out in in the following sort of four categories generally, which was each of the four, there's houses, four of the different firehouses at this point in time need floor reworkings. So we, in that 300,000, about 100,000 is allocated, would be allocated towards those projects. As well as there's generators that are needed at, I believe, three of the houses, which is approximately about 75,000, it could be four houses, but rough roughly in those numbers. And then there was the additional money was communications and sort of technology, vehicle maintenance, as well as general maintenance around the various different firehouses. So that's kind of some of the priorities that were brought to our attention and laid out also in Chief Tremblay's capital plan that we wanted to ensure that they had the ability to make those necess, you know, apply those, that funding were necessary, so.
And we tried to keep that general so that they had the ability to to shift things around, you know, as they reprioritize. But yeah, that's a pretty good summary right there, Joe.
But it's based on a set capital plan.
Right.
Is the the big point here.
So, but I mean, as just to, just to reiterate, John, I mean, priorities change, obviously. But you gives you the flexibility with the money, the general categories like that, you know what I mean? You know where it's going, you want it to go. Sometimes projects cost a little bit more, sometimes they cost a little less, they have to drop off. But obviously, those are the kind of the baselines that we were going off of with the capital.
Yeah, so a resident hearing this, you know, it's it's not that it's funding for any purpose. There is a plan, the priorities, of course, are determined as we go along. But there is a plan, there are needs that will be, you know, that are down in writing that will be met with the funds.
Can I, can I add one more thing? I think the one, there was one question that was asked. And it was, why not just put this into the budget, the 300,000 for the fire? And just to put it in perspective, the fire budget is less than that. I'd say in the last 15 years, historically, it's probably hovered between 280 and 290,000 for the, for the entire year to cover everything. So to tack 300,000 onto that, you're more than doubling budget. I mean, it's just, that's why you, the bond council was saying, you know, for those big capital things, that's, that's when you bond, that's, you know, that's when it makes sense.
And before I forget, there was a question in the beginning about whether the city uses bond counsel. And most all cities do use specialized bond counsel. There aren't too many bond counsel out there. We use Joseph Fozzie, we have for the last eight years. And that is, of course, very standard to defer to a bond specialist to make sure we're not only in compliance, but also doing things, doing things the right way and the smart way. So if we move on to options, so the questions were, well, you know, what are our options here? At the end of the day, this is the the proposal. What are the ways, what are the ways that the Board of Aldermen can go here? The first option would be, if the the Aldermen are so inclined, to go with these items or with these items as revised to the ballot in November. So there's a general election, as we know, presidential election in November. That's likely the the next best opportunity to get these projects on a ballot where residents can vote on them. We have talked in the past about the possibility of pairing this up with a primary. However, that's problematic for several reasons. One of them being that a primary is generally going to attract voters from one party or the other, not voters who are without a party. And as our registrar voters and town clerk have pointed out, doing that would necessitate likely three different ballots. One for the Democratic primary, one for the Republican primary, and a third ballot entirely for the referendum. So it's likely to be a costly and a complicated affair, too. So the next best opportunity to get this on a ballot would be the November general election. But there is another alternative to try to hold an earlier referendum separately, entirely, since it's primary. But this is, of course, going to raise public safety issues, as when would be too soon to try this, and cost issues. If you're holding a referendum separate from any general election, you're going to have to shoulder that cost 100%. A third option would be to proceed with time sensitive items by resolution. And this is only a possibility because of the Governor's Executive Order 7S, which was made on April 1st of this year in connection with the COVID crisis. And essentially, the executive order does away with in person voting requirements for bonding, but it does require a resolution by the legislative body, in this case, the Board of Aldermen. That would be for time sensitive or critical issues where it's necessary to keep municipal operations going. And we're not doing so would result in financial consequences, significant financial loss. It's likely possible for our 65 Main Street project, but may not be possible for all the projects. So if this route were pursued, you'd likely have to take a look at using the remaining, going forward with the remaining items on the November ballot. And of course, finally, you can reject all or some of the bonding initiatives. And so that's the lay of the land, that we talked about need, we've talked about opportunity and what position the city is in to borrow. We've tried to answer as many of the questions that the public and the Aldermen put out there. And also provide some, some alternatives and options as to where to go from this point. So that concludes our presentation, but of course, staff will always be on hand during this process to answer questions and to provide additional research.
Hey, John, I have a question for Barry, if we still have him.
Let me see, hey, Barry? Unmuting him now. He is with us. Hey, Barry?
Hey, hi.
Barry, it's Tony Momon, I got a question for you.
Hi.
So we talked about, you know, the, some of the rate environments around, you know, lower, low rates right now that we're able to borrow, you know. You keep saying record lows and things like that, but as things, you know, start to return back to some sense of normalcy and, you know, borrowing may potentially increase. Would you feel as though it's an accurate statement that rates are going to continue to climb as we move further away from this COVID crisis?
That is a good question, you know, I gotta be honest with you, the short answer is, is no one knows. But but a lot of what I've been reading has been saying that with all this borrowing the government is doing, that that we could see interest rates rise in, over the next, you know, six months or so. However, on the flip side, the government's been running deficits for a long time. I mean, when I went to grad school, everyone said when the government has large deficits, interest rates go up higher. All we've been seeing is rates going lower. So, so, I mean, I can't, nobody really knows where rates are going to go, but that's clearly a possibility that rates could go higher. I could tell you, in the analysis I put together, I assumed rates of 3% and 3.15% for the city's bond issues. The current borrowing rate now is about just a little over 2%. So we did build in about 100, over 100 basis points of capacity for rates to increase.
So Barry, what's that, what's that? So if we were to lock in a, just above 2% type of rate, what does that do, the overall, either the face value or the, or the interest paid over the life of the kind of put some numbers together, if you kind of want to see. I'm looking at about a $600,000 range between that 100 basis point we're talking about.
Yeah, I can't do it in my head. I give you credit if you can. It's, it definitely would push those interest rates down in the analysis. I mean, I didn't want to make the analysis look too, too good or too bad. I just tried to be conservative as possible. But clearly, if, if, if the city were to issue these bonds in this current environment, that debt analysis that we looked at earlier would look much better, because the interest rates would be a lot lower.
Right, so I kind of looked at it across, you know, kind of broke it up between want and need, if you will, based on my analysis, you know, for the police, you know, for the, for the $3.1 million, we're looking at about $600,000 save if we locked in at like a 2% or even a 2.1 versus a 3.1.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I always like to be conservative. Like I said, I could, I probably should have used, you know, closer to 2% for this analysis, but you know, the worst thing I like to do is assume that you borrow at 2% and then have rates go up and you end up borrowing at 3%. And people said, what the heck is this guy doing? So I like to build in a lot of, what's, how's the saying go? You know, try and be conservative and try and do a lot better than what you promise.
Yeah, under-promise, oversell?
That's it. Under-promise, over-perform, right.
I think I saw Alderman Phipps also. Do you have a question, Alderman Phipps?
I have many questions, and I could easily vocalize my complete disappointment with this whole project. But time being of the essence, I'll go to the important one first, I think. From what I heard, we expect the police station to be completed by like November of this year. And I've also heard that we can't get the police station completed without another $2.6 million. So we can't do that after the police station's completed, I don't think, unless the construction company wants to float us along. So we're between a rock and a hard place there, are we not?
Hey Bill, I think it was the additional pieces that were not part of the original police station that were, that's part of that $3 million.
Yeah, the big, the big nut, I believe, is the tower.
Right.
I noticed that that's been a hole, it's sat there all winter. And I was wondering if they're holding out to get more money. Because we were told right on through this project that I was aware of, and I followed it a little bit, that we were going to get a police station, and everything was all set. Now I'm hearing that from the start, it was knowledge of the inside that we were going to be short. And we're sort of getting backed up against a wall now to have to fund this. It doesn't look like we have a choice. And that's disturbing.
I think we have a choice.
It looks like we've got no choice.
Well, we definitely have a choice, you know, it alters the scope of the project. If we, if we, you know, choose this last option to reject all of it, it alters the scope.
It alters the scope. I think I heard somebody say that we won't get a police station.
Well, certainly, you know, I wanted to get Brian Yooms to talk a little bit, but certainly you aren't going to get full use of the building. And as we described in the presentation, we took a look at some initiatives that would scale the project back. But the Police Building Committee has been very firm, and the mayor is following that recommendation, that changing the scope is not only going to reduce the usefulness of the overall building, but it's not going to be helpful to the core project. It's going to compromise public safety, and it's not going to deliver the police station that our service deserves. But Brian can speak more specifically to where we are with the contract and what those outcomes could be. Brian, could you hear us again?
I can. Can you hear me, John?
Yes. Did you hear Alderman Phipps's question and concern?
Yeah, I can understand the concern, and the contract for the general contractor is proceeding. You're being invoiced on a monthly basis for work that they're performing. They have a locked-in contract, so they can't hold out for any more money. The 11.6 is their contract, so it'll be completed for that amount. So the, you have to have an ability to continue to fund the contract and fund the general contractor. They're still proceeding according to the schedule they submitted. And as far as invoicing, as far as payment on invoicing, they'll continue at the schedule they're anticipating.
No, but my question is, sir, is if we do not come up with any more money, what are we going to have handed to us in November of this year?
That's a good question. Yeah, you have the option of saying you're going to get a completed general construction project, but no ability to outfit the inside of it with furniture, no ability to move, no ability to have radio communications. So if you don't have those basic facilities, you don't have a facility that the police department can move into. You'll have a completed building. Have a, just can occupy.
So, so to understand, we'll have the building, but is the, the insides that we won't have, everything else will be there. So the furniture and the communications, that's what this other, the dollars are for? Not to do any of our services?
Remember in the earlier slide, you had $9 million in hard costs and $3 million in soft costs.
Right.
The soft cost, you could, you could put the soft cost toward the construction, but now then you don't have any soft costs.
Okay, so the 3.1 is all for soft cost?
No, 2.6 was for soft costs and 500,000 was for a contingency.
Okay.
You're reprioritizing the costs. You're essentially taking the soft costs and throwing them into the hard costs, right? So that leaves you with a deficit on one side.
There was a 50, $40,000 overrun or surprise, if I can use the word. Is that true? As of right now?
The current change order is right now is $40,000, and that's being handled through a contingency.
Yeah, but that, what was the 40,000 for? Was it the contamination that ran into?
No, some unforeseen, the existing.
I'm sorry, sir, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, you faded out. Okay, I'm yakking too much, maybe, I think, Eric, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank, thank you. Brian, this is Alderman Terrick Roslin. Thank you for being with us at the late hour. Appreciate it. If you could walk me through just some, some basics here. You know, and can you confirm to me what, what was, because we had asked for some, you know, some construction documents so that we could kind of verify with what's within, what's, what's within the documents that were submitted to Banton in terms of what they were quoting and what we were, to Bill's question, what we were actually being delivered. And so my question, and I still don't think I have a clear understanding on this, is you know, there's the second floor, and then there's the rest of the building. You know, so the question is, on the second floor, are we talking about, within the current scope from Banton, are they talking about delivering a cold, dark shell for that space? And for the rest of the space, you know, in, in, in technical terms, what are we actually receiving in that space as far as what Banton quoted from the beginning? And, you know, and before you answer that, you know, we didn't receive that from, from Sheila and/or anybody from the mayor's office either. It was a pretty specific request. But Brian, if you could speak to those points.
Before you do that, though, you asked for the contract, and we sent that to you. So you have the full and complete contract. So you know what they tracked it for and what the scope of their service is. So not sure what you're saying.
Yeah, thanks, Sheila. We asked for the construction documents, which includes the floor plans. You know, the floor.
Well, if you know anything about police stations, you can't give out the floor plans for a police station. That would be violating and a breach, so, you know.
That wouldn't have been a sufficient response. But yeah, Brian, if you could speak to that, I appreciate.
You didn't ask, you didn't ask for floor plans, you asked for a contract, and we gave you the contract.
Brian, could you hear us?
Yeah, his audio was going in and out, so I'm going to do the best I can with, with the question that I was able to achieve. The uppermost floor is going to be completely built out for the police department, so that'll be occupied by the police department, fully occupied. The floor below that is going to have, build out for shell space. It's not going to have final finishes, but we have new windows on the exterior. We have all fire suppression piping put in. We have mechanical systems anticipated for that space. We have some general lighting, but we don't have ceilings. So the shell space would be walls, partitions, and we have separated an area of about 8,000 square feet, which was being anticipated for potential for seniors. We'd have a shell space, shell area for a community room. We have other shell space for potentials for, for regional spaces. And then we have some shell space that the police department, we're going to utilize for physical training and physical fitness. So those, the only area that's being considered for police space at this point was physical training, physical fitness on that floor. The rest of it is being for a future, future fit out for a future tenant.
Okay, great, thanks so much. So that scope was included, is, was included from the beginning within that 11.6 bid that we received from Banton?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're talking about a finished, that's a finished space, move-in ready for the, for the second, for the, for the police department floor. And on the sec, on the second floor, which will be at the moment vacant, that's not a cold, dark shell that we're, that Banton is delivering. They're delivering full MEP, not, obviously not demise to a specific tenant fit out, but it's a, it's a, it's a lit, heated, conditioned space with even dry, gypsum wallboard on, on the exterior, and even potentially some, some walls, partitions, demising walls, partitions within that space, is that correct? Brian, could you still hear us?
He's really fading in and out.
So he was, he was asking the extent of the fit out of that first floor?
The extent of the fit out on the second floor are no final finishes, but we have partition walls. We have no ceilings, but we have general lighting. So a future tenant would have to come in and do a fit out. They'd have to put in additional partition walls. They'd have to put in ceilings and lighting. They'd have to extend mechanicals to whatever rooms that you're going to be creating. And you have to install air conditioning. The heating plant is, will be there.
So there is, there is like a cooling tower or boiler system that's, that's included within the scope as it stands right now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just a follow-up question, Brent. When, at what point was the contingency, the soft costs and contingencies for the project set? And who, and who set that?
John, can you repeat that?
What the contingency for the project was and how it was set. Sorry, when, when was it set? When, when and how was it set?
The contingency was set back in 2016 in the original budget. It was $500,000 on a $9 million hard cost. So it was, it was a, typically you want to go into a project with 10% contingency, but this didn't allow contingency, so we were figuring 500,000 on 9 million.
So is it safe to say, Brian, that when we received our quote from Banton, you know, that, that proportion, you know, we knew what our contingency, we knew what our total costs were on this project, contingency, soft costs, hard costs, when we received our bid from Banton back in September of 2019? Is that right?
I think he's having trouble hearing you, but yes.
All right, so my, my last question, I'll leave it for other Aldermen to, to ask some questions. Why, if we knew what, that we needed additional funds here, if there's nothing's changed, we knew all the, we knew all the components. You know, we, the scope hasn't changed, the soft costs haven't changed. We set our contingency amount back in 2016, and that hasn't changed. If we knew we needed additional dollars for this project back in September when we received our bid from Banton, why are we first hearing this so much later, you know, almost, almost, you know, eight, nine months later? So I don't know, I guess Brian's still having a little issue, but we did describe in this presentation the sequence of events with the Police Building Commission taking a look at this, taking a look at the bids, and realizing that the project could very well escalate another million dollars if an action wasn't taken. And there was an attempt to mitigate the costs to get them into that 11.6 million dollar figure. But at the end of the day, what that would take, essentially, the big portion, as Alderman Phipps mentioned, the tower. Moving the tower or eliminating it and creating an entrance on East Main. Ultimately, that was not recommended, or strongly recommended against by the commission because of how it would intermingle members of the public with members of the police station and also the incarcerated. And so it was strongly recommended that those steps not be taken, and that given the conditions of the market and the financial condition of the city that we seek additional money. But again, it's, you know, given the timeline, you have the building already as property of the city. You have bids on the table, and you don't want them to go up another million dollars. And so a good faith effort was done in public to avoid that situation, to try to contain costs. And as we mentioned, it was a public vote of the Police Building Commission to go ahead with the contract, to recommend the signing of the contract with the understanding that these efforts would be made to try to contain costs. And again, this recommendation is being made to you today, because number one, we believe it's going to be doing more harm than good to contain the cost. You're not going to get a police station that does justice to the, to our police department and the public. You're not going to get a fully equipped building to do what it can do, and you have financial conditions to go forward and do it right now that are essentially ideal conditions to go forward and borrow. And at the end of the day, maybe the city, you know, was overly optimistic that the entire project was 12 million. As Brian will tell you, there are many places they're going to spend 15 million and just get a police station. Never mind a municipal building and never mind a parking lot. But it was a deliberate process that was also a transparent process. And again, I'm sure that Paul and Chief Cota and Brian will be willing to speak to that. And so again, you know, as always, we'd like to hold the line, we'd like things to cost as, as little as possible. But in this particular situation, you know, it's likely fair value for the total project. Yeah, my understanding is that, and I, and I wanted to let everybody else, go ahead, Diane, I'm happy to, I have many more questions, but
No, no, no.
But, you know, but just to sort of finish on this, in this line of questions. My understanding is that we actually haven't, you know, to stick to that 11.6, we didn't strip out any scope of work. The tower, it was, there was no adjust, that tower, as it is, as it's being requested, hasn't changed since the beginning. And so there was no reduction in scope to And so there was no reduction in scope to, to, to reach the 11.6 million dollar contract with Banton. And so we keep sort of having this, it sounds like a merry-go-round that we keep coming back to, you know, oh, we, this is additional scope. We just need to establish this is not additional scope. And that, you know, or am I hearing you saying that at the time when we agreed to the 11.6, the intention of the police building commission was that they were going to, they were going to value engineer and they were going to stick within the, to try to stick within the referendum bonding, the original referendum bonding amount. But ultimately, they decided later, at some later date, that there would be no additional value engineering.
Exactly, exactly. The point of the presentation has been that they were faced with a choice to either accept the bid or to let the bid go. They understood that that would very likely mean rebidding and getting an even higher cost to the project. And so they decided to recommend acceptance of the contract based on an effort that they hoped could contain cost, that they could chew change orders down by tinkering with the design. But ultimately, that didn't work out. It didn't work out because tinkering with that design would be adverse to public safety, would be adverse to the overall functioning of the building. And so therefore could not and cannot recommend making those changes. And at the same time, given that we have an opportunity to borrow at an advantageous situation and rate, we're making the recommendation to you today.
And remember that the $12 million originally contemplated was only the police station, did not contemplate anything else, i.e. acquisition of property. But, you know, you're bringing up an interesting point, Tarek. Brian, Brian maybe can speak to this, but we, we did sit with Banton on more than one occasion to try to go over some things that could be value engineered. So that was the intent, the, the police commission, the police chief, Brian and the architects did sit with Banton and go over everything and asked them to value engineer to bring that number down in an attempt to bring that number down. And when we went through all of the alternatives for trying to, you know, bring that number down, it was going to compromise the integrity of the building, or at least that's what the consensus was.
Hey, guys, can I make an observation here? I think we could probably spend the next probably four days trying to really go through every historical aspect of this project. As my grandmother would say, you know, shit or get off the mop. So can we maybe move forward with some sort of decision on what we're going to do here? We're approaching the 10:30 hour. People have lives. No.
I mean, I think it's important for everybody, for the, for the entire board to have an opportunity to, to, to bring up points of discussion, you know, I mean.
But they, but they haven't had the opportunity.
And I think points of discussion are good, but if we're pursuing an agenda, Tarek, I think we should kind of put that stuff aside for now.
There's no agenda. It's basic questions. We still haven't had answers to some, some basic questions. We asked for sources and uses of funds. You know, the, we, the, the sources and uses of funds on this project was dated in November. You know, so I was really hoping that we could have seen some of these documents beforehand that were presented tonight and have the opportunity for the mayor's office to present those documents and, and, in their own words, you know, so we're taking this stuff in for the first time tonight. You know, I, I'm with you in general in the sense that we need to be smart about the way that we, that we, that we budget and capital financing and, and bonding and for large purchases makes sense. My issue is, you know, the use and management and oversight of these things. And it really does bother me to think that there might have been knowledge of this much, a long time ago. And that, you know, to our knowledge, as far as what was being communicated at Board of Aldermen, this, this project was, you know, on schedule, on budget, and, and there was no additional funds going to be requested. You know, so that, that, these are basic. I don't think that's an agenda of any, of any sort.
So let me ask you a hypothetical. If, if you knew six months ago, 18 months ago, even a year ago, do you bond that at that higher rate technically than the opportunity that's put in front of us now?
My question is why, why, when, at what point and why were we not notified?
Because the project's on budget?
So my question maybe would be better suited for Paul then, because if it's the police building commission that was trying to decide whether it was worth value engineering, if Paul can maybe help us understand what, at what, at what point did the police building commission decide that they weren't going to pursue those value engineered items?
Well, we did look at numerous value engineering aspects of it. We had numerous plans drawn up for the building. As was stated earlier, one of the possible value engineering was moving the tower on East Main Street. That created a huge officer safety problem within the building. And, and I'd certainly be glad to sit down and explain what exactly to you or to anyone else in a private matter, because it is security reasons on, on the layout of the floor plan. There were numerous things that we looked at. And certainly none of them were conducive to what our officers need or want. And, but we did look at them. And I, I think that Banton came in at the low bid. There wasn't a lot of fat to begin with on this project. There wasn't, you know, there was a lot of extra of anything on that could be eliminated. We did take a good, hard look at everything and some of the, some of the things that we could eliminate, we did. But certainly I, I think it's going to be a department that anyone, any citizen or resident of the town is going to be proud to have in our town.
Yeah. And I, and I agree. I mean, and I think, you know, to Brian's point and to Paul's point. I mean, it's, it's, you know, the other, other municipalities are spending more on less for, for a good building. It's for me, it's really trying to understand the process that's been taking place here and, and how much the Board of Aldermen have kind of been brought in on some of that decision-making process and trying to understand, you know. We, we might have made some different decisions, you know, budgeting, budgeting wise, you know, the sooner that we.
We have Board of Aldermen members who sit on the police building commission and who, who were Board of Aldermen members and who are Board of Aldermen members. So, so. And at no point did we say that this project is not going to come in on budget. It is, it is going to come in on budget. I guess the question is, do you want to do something with the entire building? Do you want to invest in the downtown? Do you want to see, you know, that building put to full realization? And I, and I think now's the time to take advantage of the, of the low interest rates. And I, I just can belabor this all night long, Tarek, but I, I'm sure you agree that investing in the downtown makes sense, right? Because, you know, if we turn the downtown around, we can turn a lot around.
Yeah, I guess that's another, Joe, Joe's got his hand up.
No, go ahead, Tarek. Finish up, please.
You know, John raised a good point, and I think with, with regard to the potential for, for stimulus, you know, essentially that, you know, funding for a project of this nature can provide. I don't know if we have it in our contract with Banton, but many times I know cities, when they award contracts, they will, they'll have some kind of requirement or threshold or milestone for local contractor utilization, kind of hire like local labor, either through their subs or directly through the GC themselves. You know, in the, in the essence of, of that local stimulus, do we have any, any kind of local contractor utilization or local labor utilization requirements in our contract there?
Well, we don't, we don't have those as a municipality. But we certainly encourage that. And I'm not, I'm not sure what they're, what they do in terms of local hiring.
It's all on a good faith effort, Tarek. There's no minimum percentage set asides for this.
Joe, is Joe next?
Oh, you go ahead, Diane.
All right. No, and I don't, and I don't have an agenda. I'll tell you right off the bat, I don't have an agenda. But my experience has been with grants and with funding for over 40 years. What's difficult for me in this process is the fact that we are being asked to approve quite a bit of money for funding without truly seeing what is for. So, so fire department, for example, we are saying, we're going to get this, we're going to get that, we're going to get this truck, that truck. I would prefer to see something that actually shows what is the need, what's the most immediate need? And what are we actually purchasing? What is the cost? So we, I could feel as though I could make an actual decision on, well, yeah, that's true. They need that $300,000 or they need that $100,000 without it just being, to me, numbers just being thrown out at me. So I asked for that information and I know we didn't get it yet. But I, I don't, I, I feel more comfortable seeing true numbers and seeing what the needs are, why they have to be met, and also prioritizing. Because if we do have to make a decision on, can we do the whole thing? Can't we do part of it? How do I know what's, what's, what's more important than the other? Police station is separate. That's, that's, that's separate for me. But I'm also talking about, I'll talk about the other three projects. I know the police station, you've got to have certain things in there. I don't know you need $3.1 million, but I haven't seen a thing to show that.
If we, if we move to referendum in November, we have time to get that, correct?
And, you know, Mr. President, let me say again, for fire, I, I think you're hearing, you know, they do have a capital plan. When it comes down to it, they would like the ability to be able to use the funding to meet the elements of that plan on their timetable, right, on their, on their terms. And the question for them is, could they be more specific? Again, our fire departments can't say more about what they do for the city. Priorities do shift, they do change, but to Alderwoman Strowman's point here, the more certainty we have about where the money is going to go, the more comfortable we could feel. So maybe we could reach out and say, okay, well, we, on that capital plan, what are the priorities right now? What would the money go to? Maybe that would lend some comfort. And again, just like with the roads, it's not an attempt to avoid the specifics. It's saying that, you know, there's, there's plenty of priority, there's plenty of need. More than could be satisfied with the bonding. And, and we don't want to commit the priorities yet before, you know, until we actually have the money in hand and realize, okay, what, what's, what's the first it's needed for? We try to have that relationship with the department so we don't set them up for, for failure.
Right. But, but I, I think, you know, coming back to some of that other point, you know, Diane, to your point, to, to those things, you know, if you talk about the immediate need right now.
Right.
I, I don't think there's, there's, there's not roads with, you know, giant holes with, with, you know, lava and all sorts of other things falling to the center of the earth kind of thing. So I think that type of stuff potentially, is it important? Yes. Is it needed? Yes. Is it, is it dire to get it right now? I don't believe so. I believe some of that stuff could wait for the referendum in November. The stuff for the police station, based on, I believe it was, Mr. Han had said, you know, around the officer safety, the public safety, I'm looking at it, you know, even with the financial aspect. That's, that's, you could potentially have a $600,000 impact for that 100 basis points just by waiting till November. Is it, is it, is it worth straining the taxpayers in this city with an additional $600,000 to wait six months? That's a big spend to me over the life of the bond.
And, I mean, I don't disagree with you at all, Tony. And I'm, I'll tell you, like, I'm inclined, you know, for the police, police, the 65 Main Street in its entirety, I'm inclined to, to vote in favor of it and potentially even, you know, in an expedited fashion. What I, and, and even on these other items, I'm not saying, you know, what I'm really looking for and, and to, to Diane's point, you know, any, any funding request that goes before anybody that is going to, has any fiduciary responsibility would require at least this basic level of, even if it was a, you didn't even have to go down to each item, but like even a line item allocation, you know, we're just being told that there's a plan in place and, and that's it. Just whether there's a plan, you know. So I think this board has, in President's short, you have an opportunity here to have a unanimous support of this resolution. It's just a little bit more information. I think we go a long way to help this board understand to be able to get that unanimous support. And to the point of the fact that we're talking about.
Are you speaking for all the board members, Tarek?
I'm speaking for myself.
Yeah.
I'm speaking for some of the other aldermen that I, that I spoke, have spoken with on this. You know, I think, you know, the fact that we, we are talking about a November referendum gives us the time as well to, to have those discussions, you know, and, and before we approve, you know. I mean, at, at this moment, it would be a no vote for me because of the lack of information that, that we still have on this. But, you know, I think we have, there's a lot of time between now and, and the next alderman meeting for some of these requests to be brought forward. And, and we're going to be having many discussions that are tangential to this with regard to boat and, and budgeting in the next few days here as well, which will probably give me additional comfort as well. You know, it's just, that's, and I'll leave it there, you know, so that I've said everything I need to say.
Okay, so to piggyback off of that, could, off of Tony's comment and Tarek's comment, could we request a draft of a res, what a resolution would look like for that seven, that 7S Vermont emergency.
The executive order?
Executive order. And then I think if we saw that, you know, I, I think you might, as Tarek said, you might get a greater comfort level. And, and the other items, it seems like everyone is comfortable pushing those. And in the meantime, we would be filling it in with more information and detail. I don't know. That's my suggestion.
I think there's a few components under that executive order that would potentially disqualify some of the items that were there. So I think it talked about public safety. It talked about a large financial impact, you know, that it would have a, I forget the actual term out of it, it wasn't serious, but it was.
Significant loss.
Significant, thank you. A significant financial impact to the city. You know, foregoing that project, trimming things out of the police station, it poses both, you know, based on what Mr. Han had said, officer safety, which again leads to public safety, the financial impact, you have a $600,000 potential price tag on that. Potentially more if the rates do climb above that 3.1%.
Josh, if I might have just a bit of input. I think I'm, I'm swaying with Tarek and probably everybody else. If we could pull off something with respect to the police station issue in an expedited fashion, as it sounds like it should be, I could go along with that. I don't know if we can pull it off on a 7S situation. There's too many executive orders out there now and somebody's going to step on the constitution eventually and it's going to come back to bite us off. But in any case, it'd be up to our corporation council to verify that specifically that it would be legal to proceed in that direction. And that would be fine with me. The other ones, they're going to wait for November as far as I'm concerned, no matter how we split it. I am very uncomfortable with the other ones, all three of them. But the police station, hey, what it is, what it is. But, you know, you go down the road once, get her done, get her done correctly. That's my opinion.
So just, just a point, you know, this will probably end up turning into a motion that I want to make. If the executive order were to expire, we're then locked in, Bill, at this point, to wait until November. And we run the risk of expending that extra 600,000.
You know, I don't think we have any choice otherwise unless we want to spend, I think it's what, $14,000 to run a separate referendum.
Right.
Piggybacking on something else.
Right.
Nothing else to piggyback on because it's my understanding that the, the ones in August are off the table. It's patently illegal to do it. You can't do it on that day.
Right.
So 600,000 measured up against 20,000 measured against 7S. It's, it's a crapshoot, but Mr. Merini, I'm sure can at least verify that we're going down the right legal road.
And from, from what we've been talking about, I, I really think this discussion is very in line with what the presentation that, that we. is very in line with what the presentation that, that we made. When it comes down to 65 Main, it really is what it is. You know, at, at the end of the day, it's an item that I think is necessary to move forward, and I think that's what you've heard from our experts. It's something that just has to be done. In terms of the other items, as reflected in the presentation, again, in the past, it's been done in a way so the specifics weren't upfront to give some leeway to the departments. But, you know, I think the mayor's office completely understands if the Board of Aldermen would like to approach it in a different way, and these are items that would wait till November, so they could be done differently. But I'd say when you look at that executive order, you're looking at making sure the orderly operation of the municipality could proceed, that's certainly here, and that if you don't act, there's going to be a consequence to the public health or safety or a significant financial loss. Well, certainly, the idea of not getting this project done, having to remobilize, possibly doing it under less advantageous financial circumstances, all of that speaks to financial loss, and we really have a public safety facility. And I think the sooner it's prepared, the sooner it's ready, the, you know, the, the better for the public safety. So, you, you know, I do believe it falls in those parameters, you know, and what the governor intended to make sure that, that we weren't having to wait and, and risk the welfare of our city. So I could certainly put a draft together, but I understand with the other items, completely understand that if you'd like to have more detail and, and more specifics, something that could be worked on for November.
All right, based on that, can I make a motion to, John, have you draft the resolution to include under seven S, the 3.1 million that we're talking about for the bonding for the police station, to go on an emergency meeting this coming Tuesday, the 19th, May 19th, so that we can review that resolution and potentially bring a vote forward? The remaining three items, we can, I think it was three or four other bonding items that we had talked about, we can hold those until the June Alderman meeting to review those further, and eventually, I think at that point, the executive order will have expired. If it's not, we could revisit it, but then most likely hold those till the November referendum.
Is there a second on that? Is everybody sleeping?
Second.
Just pointed, pointing discussion.
Can we have a second first?
No, second. I thought we got one.
Yeah, yeah, we got one.
Second, by Rivers? Okay, go ahead.
The only other thing I would, I would say here is that, you know, and it's a topic of discussion for, just after this is, you know, do, if we have, we have funds available for senior center, for some location, it's possible that, you know, we would, we would maybe need, you know, some, some slightly additional funds if we were going to try to make it compatible in this location, so that might be a bonding consideration in and of itself. So we can, we can maybe have that as a separate conversation, but, you know, it's, it's relevant to this.
That's good.
Can I make a suggestion? Well, actually, is there any other comments on this? Can I make a suggestion that we, we vote on this? I'm hoping that you guys are okay with that. And then given that one of the executive session items is that discussion on the seniors, can we bump all this stuff to, the, the executive stuff to next week as well, if we agree to have a meeting?
I'd go along with that.
Yeah. With the seniors, I agree.
Yeah. I guess this is for Corporation Council, there's four items on there, is there anything that's time sensitive before next Tuesday?
If we could do this next Tuesday, we'll be okay.
All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
What are we talking about?
What?
What are we talking about here? His motion?
Motion? Did you read the motion?
Opposed.
Wake up.
Make a motion to pay for the executive session till next Tuesday.
All right.
That'll be balled in with our, our meeting, and that means JP, JP Merini will have a, you'll have a resolution.
Resolution.
For us.
Seven S. And he'll also reach out, you know, I'll do some research as well to see if, you know, what the situation has been with other communities with that resolution, but on the face of the order, this is exactly the circumstance it contemplated.
Okay.
Yeah, John, just double check, because someone had told me that it was for emergencies only.
Time sensitive, time sensitive, and it does require the board to make certain findings, but given our situation right here, I could see us making those findings.
Okay, yeah, just.
Chicago had made a motion to move executive session.
To what?
Next Tuesday. Chicago made the motion to make, move executive session items to next Tuesday. I don't know if there was a second. Second.
Yeah, Joe seconded.
Yeah, we already did that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no, staying, perfect, all right.
Make a motion to end.
Yeah, one, I just want to make one comment, I wanted to thank all of the, the guests from the police commission, the bond council, the architect, and these people have stayed on the line, the residents obviously as well, but I know it was a really long meeting, but there were a lot of really good questions, once again, a lot of good information and a lot of perspective put on these projects. And in the end, I, I know we'll do the right thing, so we'll, we'll schedule the meeting for next Tuesday and my favorite part of the meeting, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Joe, second by?
Go move. Diamond.
Oh, Diane. All in favor?
Diamond.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Good night. Somehow I don't think I've said everything I wanted to, but.
All right. We'll see you next time.